Raise for the pledge. Dan, can you lead us to the pledge, sir?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
We can have a moment of silence for the men and women in the armed forces. Also, today's International Holocaust Day. May those be remembered, may we never forget. And also for Frank P. Morris, who is a veteran and a former commander of the American Legion. Thank you.
Chris, come on down, please.
I'm going to defer to later on, Karen was going to present her thing first.
Fair enough. Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Is that it, sir?
That's it.
All right. Next is Mayor's remarks. First, congratulations to the Scotticoke School for becoming a Special Olympics National Unified Champion School. Champion School demonstrates commitment to inclusion by meeting 10 standards of excellence and receives a national banner for the recognition. Only eight schools in Connecticut, or six schools in Connecticut achieve this status. So congratulations to the Scotticoke staff for a great job. Thank you to Kathy Schmedley, President of the POW MIA Forget Me Nots, the Forget Me Nots volunteers, the Veterans Honor Guard, American Legion Commander Jeff McBriarty, New Milford PD Chief Ceruto, and Pat Maguire, who did the bagpipes, and everyone that attended the ceremony this weekend to ensure, the bell ringing, to ensure our unrecovered POWs and their families are not forgotten. So this is done annually, and I can't thank them enough for making sure that we never forget. Thank you to everyone that attended this Saturday's Coffee with the Mayor, and thank you to Chief Ceruto for attending as well. Thank you to our DPW team for clearing our roads last time storm, which was on January 18th and 19th. These storms seem to be rain, freezing rain, and a little bit of snow, which is a costly endeavor, also more of a safety than just pure snow. So thank you for all of their hard work. Also, concerning our cybersecurity efforts, we continue to harden our IT infrastructure, and thank you to our IT Director David Watson for all of his efforts. Concerning Veterans Bridge, for those that don't know, the contracts are rother construction. We'll begin starting on April 1st, the construction of a reconstruction of Veterans Bridge. They have 244 days to complete it, which the completion tentative date is November 30th, 2020. The planned work includes deck repair, steel repair, rivet replacement, pavement replacement, and painting. Eversource Electric is working with them as they are an impacted utility on the bridge. They are not allowed to close the bridge during the day, only at night between 10:00 PM and 6:00 AM. They are limited to eight weeks for total shutdown of the bridge. The detour will be still driver and Boardman Drives. So please make sure we'll be posting additional updates when the work does begin to progress, but please plan accordingly because there will be traffic delays on this. During the day, they will periodically close the bridge to one lane, and New Milford PD will be doing the traffic safety. Also, concerning Bridge Street congestion, we're continuing to work with Connecticut DOT to look at increased synchronization of the lights on Bridge Street Route 7, where the Big Y is, and over here on Grove Street, all the way up 202. Our DPW team continues to work with them to synchronize those and find other alternatives to make that less congested. We're also going to be working with New Milford PD to enforce and educate the "do not block the box" that is at West Street and Bridge Street, and there'll be more to come on that as well. I'd also like to thank Jill Scholazar, Joan Gibbons, Mandela Young, and Karen Castle for their starting of the "Thank You to the Mission is Possible," which is donations of hard goods to our troops, sending them overseas. So I think that's a wonderful endeavor, and thank you for that. As I said, today is also International Holocaust Memorial Day, so please keep all those that lost their lives in these concentration camps in your prayers this evening, and as always, and may we never forget. The Board of Ed budget discussions have started. Started with the superintendent's budget, which was presented last Tuesday. They have presentations tomorrow night with deliberations tentatively on Wednesday, the 29th. Once the Board of Education has enacted on their budget, it will then move over to the town side for review, and then to the Town Council to make recommendations, and to the Board of Finance. Our Town Council Board of Finance meetings start on Tuesday, the 25th. That's all I have. Thank you.
Item number four, our consent agenda, move to approve Consent Agenda Items 5A and 5B.
Second.
5A is reappointments, 5B is appointments.
So I have a question about this. I have a couple of appointments that I don't want to approve. The rest I approve. So how do you want me to handle that? Because if you don't give us that latitude to make a comment or say anything, it's either approve or not approve. So, and I don't want to not approve a lot of these people. You know what I'm saying?
We have a discussion. Isn't that where you can say what you want?
She's asking, though, I think, if we can pull some out.
Well, make a motion to approve.
The motion is to approve 5A reappointments and 5B appointments altogether.
So.
Yeah, a discussion?
Yep.
That you can amend it?
Yep.
As I, it seems to be the procedure here?
Absolutely.
Okay. So we could amend that, to approve all of them except for the ones that you have questions on.
So do you want me to make the amendment?
Yep.
Okay. So I would approve all of them, except, and this is nothing personal against Katie, but as Katie's being appointed as an alternate on the Ethics Committee, you already have your Chairman of the Republican Town Committee, and now the Vice Chair of the Council as on the Ethics Committee, and I just think to the public, it possibly presents a non-ethical problem.
You think because I'm not ethical on it?
No. That's what I'm saying, it's nothing against you.
I think I'm very ethical.
But, I know you are, but I just think to the public, it's probably not a good perception. So I would not, I'm sorry, Katie, I would not vote for that, but, and the other.
I'm sorry, is your motion to amend to?
She's amending that Ethics, the Ethics on the appointment, 5B, for the, she's amending the Ethics Commission, 5B, and you want to say, like, to remove me? You don't want to vote for that?
Yeah, so, like, I don't want everybody, I just want to be able to say that I'm not going to vote for that.
I understand. I understand, I don't take it personally.
No, and I don't know that it really needs an amendment, but I just need an avenue to say that I'm not going to support it.
I think, yeah.
Well, a consent agenda, by virtue of its term, means that we do everything as one by expediency, and it means that you consent or you dissent, so.
But I don't want to dissent against everybody else on the agenda, that's what I'm saying. So that's why I'm looking for an avenue to, you know.
Can we pull that one out?
How about if I redo my motion, remove the motion made, and I will move to accept item 5A, reappointments? Because that's the majority of.
Right, I see.
I'll withdraw my second from the original motion.
Okay.
And I'll draw a second from the new one.
You'll second my new motion? Okay.
So.
And then we'll do 5B, and I'll, you can separate them. I'll separate them.
Yeah, goes up here, goes up here.
All the way to page 6.
Six halfway down, or quarter way down.
5B starts halfway down, about a quarter down the page or so, third. 5A is all of the reappointments.
Okay, and then I had one more, and that was on Park and Rec. I do not want to support Paul Semasky.
Is this on the appointments, Mary Jane, or reappointments?
This is, um, probably.
Okay, well, we're not saving any time here, but, tell me what page?
That would be page 5.
Page 5, and then that doesn't separate it out.
Well, that's right in the middle of the 5A, so you want to remove somebody from Parks and Rec?
I, um, it's just my personal, and I don't want everybody else to, you know, have to vote on this. I just, I'm not going to support him for Park and Rec, as I mentioned in a prior meeting.
Okay, go. So the motion is, I changed it, and we're only going to vote on the Consent Agenda 5A, which are the reappointments.
We have a first and a second, and we have the Council, Women's, Plumb Rooms, Opposition to Park and Rec. Do we have any other discussion on the motion? All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Next.
Now, move to accept Consent Agenda Item 5B, which are appointments, which start one third down on page 6, as you can all see, and they move over, and they end up at the top of page 7.
Second.
Any discussion?
Just like to.
Who want me to make, well, the record should show that Mary Jane took a dissent on the Ethics Commission.
Correct.
Got it.
Yeah, it's, I support the motions.
And you too?
I just, it's, it's just having elected officials on appointments to boards and commissions, I urge the Mayor in the future to see if we can come up with others rather than.
What, you don't want, I'm sorry, you don't want elected officials on boards and commissions?
Correct.
Okay.
I don't know, we never have enough.
Yeah.
Well, I understand that part, I understand that part too, but, well, I.
I'm going to retire from a lot of things.
You're going to have a lot of time on your hands, well.
Thank you.
As I said, I'd urge the Mayor to consider.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have a dissent from Mary Jane and from David on that one thing. Is that right?
I'll support it. I support the motion.
Thank you?
But I urge the.
Okay.
Any other discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Statues? Thank you.
Okay, now, I'd like to make a motion to add to our agenda a, an appointment, a list of appointments for the Library Modernization and Construction Committee 2, because they're expired, and we definitely want them to continue on enforcement, because we are beginning our, pardon? Beginning our modernization work, construction work.
Yep.
And that would be, and this is my motion, so the Library of Modernization and Construction.
First, we have to add it to the agenda.
I did. Oh, sorry, I did say, I'd like to add it.
Second.
Thank you.
Any discussion on adding to the agenda? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Motion is as follows, to accept the appointments of the Library Modernization Construction Committee 2. This is a temporary, 15 members, they're all returning. The term for all is January 27th, 2020 through July 27th, 2020. The members are Catherine Francis, Michael Gold, Joyce Hermanot, Jen Lucava, Jack Oxton, Joanne Chapin, David Elmore, Paul Partlow, Jennifer Lepari, Russell Posthauer Jr., Thomas Esposito, and Harold Hill.
These are all the same people that are on the committee as it currently is, it's just we need to update it, because we're running out, and now we're going, starting construction this spring, so it's important that we have.
January, six months, January 27th through July 27th of 2020.
What's the?
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Yes, they're, well, town, but.
What's the construction schedule?
18 months.
July being the sixth month.
Because that's per the charter.
That's what we do. That's what we do. Okay, so the motion's on the floor, seconded.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Okay, so consent out of the way.
I have to do the minutes?
Yes, let's not forget the minutes. Move to accept the minutes of the regular Town Council meeting of January 13th, 2020.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Great, thank you. I have a correction also, which I should have read before, but I don't think it'll matter to anybody in their vote. There is a misspelling on the reappointment for the Sewer Commission, John Whitman. His name was spelled Whitman, like the poet, rather than W-I-T-T-M-A-N-N.
Just make sure it's in the.
It's just a clerical typo.
Yep.
Okay. There you go. And so we're done to item number six.
That's the name, thank you.
Riverfront? There she is.
Good evening, Town Council. For the record, my name is Leva Fermin. I've been Chairman of the New Milford Riverfront Revitalization Committee, and also the Bar Grant Steering Committee, which shares a similar membership. Back, I believe it was the budget of 2017, 18, or 1819, there was money allocated for a market analysis of the town that would help to inform a number of projects, including the Plan of Conservation Development, including the master plan that the Riverfront Revitalization Committee was working on, and in general, for the town, for the zoning commission to look at your findings and recommendations. And so that fell to our committee. We did an RFP. It was also part of the Riverfront Revitalization Committee's match. The cost of the study was part of the match for the master plan grant that we received from the state. And we did an RFP, we interviewed probably six separate consultants, we received about 30 applications nationwide, and we chose the firm of Camoin Associates, which is now known as Camoin 310. And they have been working with our committee for probably six to, six or seven months now, maybe even a little longer. And so they're here tonight to present their findings, and then I'll do a little wrap-up at the end. So I'd like to invite Krista Outokrak, Franzie, Tom Doretsky, and Patrick Gallagher from Camoin, from New Milford, also helped with some land use analysis in this report.
Thank you, Leva, and thank you all for having us here.
Can I just say one more thing, and I'd like to recognize members of our committee who are here tonight who worked on this report, Lucy Wildrich, Frank Worgo, Chris Gardner, myself, our presence.
So again, my name is Krista Outokrak, Franzie, I'm with Camoin 310, and I'm here with Tom Doretsky, and Pat Gallagher, and Pat's from Mylona, McBrill. The real estate market analysis and economic analysis, as Leva mentioned, was designed to inform the town's decision-making around economic development, land use planning, and overall decision-making. We looked at economic trends, residential housing, real estate trends, retail and services, opportunities around office space, light industrial space, and then Pat and his team looked at land use zoning and infrastructure, and prepared some zoning recommendations. So we're here tonight to give you a quick summary of the findings that we came, that we developed, and then also some recommendations. As I mentioned, our approach include analysis of real estate data, as well as interviews with stakeholders, local businesses, decision-makers, economic development folks, both locally and regionally, to get a sense of what's happening on the ground. We also did some mapping of the area to understand the land use layout of the community. We conducted two public workshops, a kickoff meeting at the beginning to get initial feedback and understanding from the public about what their vision is for the town, and then we presented preliminary market findings over the summer, and it got some additional feedback and had some workshops around that. And the pictures you see there are some pictures of the vision for what some of the folks in the community wanted, would like to see for their town or their brand for the town. Working closely with the Riverfront Revitalization Committee throughout, getting feedback and guidance from them. So Tom's going to present some of the preliminary market.
Thanks, Krista. Good evening, everyone. As Krista said, I'm Tom Doretsky. I worked on a lot of the market analysis analytics for the project. So I'm just going to hit some highlights of the market analysis, all the numbers and details are in the report. This is just kind of an overview. So some demographic context, the town's current population is about 27,000. Over the last 10 years, it's begun to decline slightly, so that's kind of important context because it impacts market opportunities going forward. The orange dots are from State of Connecticut projections, so status quo, market trends continue, demographic momentum continues, there's a projected decline continued. It's not a prediction, it's just a projection based on the current trajectory. Also important is the age distribution of the community. So the blue bars there are 2015, the orange bars are 2030. So the trend here is kind of an aging of the population, a shifting toward older adults. In 2015, seniors made up about 21% of the population. By 2030, they're expected to count for 29%. And then together with that, you're seeing a decline in families and school-aged children. All that to say, those demographic trends impact workforce, customer base, and housing markets, and all of those things are interconnected. So you need, you know, the right demographics to have workforce to staff businesses in town, you need the customers to patronize those businesses, and then you need the housing to support those workers and customers. So, you know, it's all a web that's linked together, and it's important to work on all three of those things together, and demographics affect those things. Economic profile, so when I talk about the region, I'm talking about these 12 communities over here. That's based on commute patterns, where New Milford workers come from, where New Milford residents commute to, so that's kind of the study area, if you will. Looking at the economy as a whole, largest sector is retail trade, with 17%, and healthcare is second, that includes the hospital, and, you know, most of the top sectors are more on the service side of things. Other big ones, government, which includes a lot of the school system employees, food services, which is restaurants, professional scientific and technical services. Employment trends, so New Milford has about 9,400 jobs currently. That's about 10% of all jobs in that 12-community region that I was talking about. Regionally and locally, employment's been kind of flat over the last five years, but New Milford did see an increase of about 1%. Gained about 100 jobs over the last five years compared to a loss of about 1% in the region. So, you know, New Milford did positively compared to the region, but lagged behind Connecticut, which saw about 2.4% growth, and well behind the US, which was 8.2% growth. Workforce availability is a growing concern. This is something we heard a lot in the interviews from a variety of employers, as well as something that came through in the data. So this is looking at the change of resident workers, so there are people that live in New Milford who are employed, and they might work in New Milford or work elsewhere. Over the last five years, there's been about a 9% drop in the workforce of New Milford, and that's largely driven by the aging population and people retiring. And then when you look at specifically STEM workers, so that includes science, tech, technology, engineering, and math, that's even a larger percent drop, so almost 18% drop. So that certainly impacts the ability to attract businesses and retain existing businesses that rely on that particularly high-skilled workforce.
Excuse me?
Yes.
I hate to interrupt you, but I really need to ask you a question. So this is very gloomy and doomy, but I just want to ask you on your workforce, so you say we have quite the drop in the STEM people. Is this based upon the amount of employers we have who need those people? Okay, so how, if we're short of those people, why would we want them if we don't have the employers who need them? I'm not saying, I'm just being a little rhetorical. But a lot of these trends you have here, you're not telling us how it compares to others. The whole nation is aging. It's, you know, it's not just New Milford. And you have compared Connecticut's, when you have your findings here about the drop in population, you show New Milford, but then you have Connecticut. So you don't have a way to define New Milford, and that's really what you're here to talk about. So the showing Connecticut dropping way down by 2040.
No, that's.
You said the orange was State of Connecticut projection?
Projections provided by the State of Connecticut for New Milford, yes.
I see, okay, and you don't have, that came from the Census Bureau, okay. I just, I think that some of this is a little misleading to someone just sitting there and listening, because to say that we have this big drop in a certain type of employee, when there's no call for that type of employee in our town is, that doesn't really make any sense to even bring that up. If we're needing retail employees, that's what we need to know. Needing STEM employees, so we put a drive out there to bring them here, where are they going to work?
Well, part of this is kind of diversifying the economy, so, I mean, you know, that's up to the town's leadership to decide what sectors to attract.
Yes, but your, but your study is what we are listening to, and the more, every panel I'm saying to myself, well, how do we compare, and where do we need these people? That's all. I just wondered if you had anything to add to that.
Well, I mean, you can see the comparison here. Connecticut, those populations have been increasing.
No, I meant in our town. I want to talk about New Milford.
Yeah, so compared to all of Connecticut, New Milford has been losing those type of workers.
Right, but compared to all of Connecticut, how many employers do we have who need STEM workers? We don't have a lot of those.
That's correct, that's right.
Okay, so that's all, I just wanted to verify that you knew that, because, and all the country is aging, so it's not just us. Go ahead.
So these are sectors that came through in the study as potential opportunity growth areas, based on kind of your existing mix of businesses, so merchant wholesalers or little goods, that's kind of a way of talking about trades businesses and those who supply to the construction industries, so that would include hardware, plumbing, machinery, those types of businesses, so there's a strong concentration of those businesses here. Those businesses rely on industrial flex space, so, you know, the supply and availability of that space drives their ability to locate here, and we'll talk about that a bit later. Healthcare is another one. So this is tied to the aging population trend, where there will be increased demand for medical office space to serve the aging and growing senior population. That also includes assisted living and other senior care across the continuum of care spectrum. And then professional services, there are a few clusters, small clusters here in town that have potential for potentially growing on. So computer systems and design, there's about 230 employees in that cluster with potential, you know, for growth with the right kind of strategy. And then there's also some life sciences. One strong company in R and D in life sciences could potentially, with their lab space investments, kind of begin a small cluster there. Now I'll kind of go quickly through the different real estate sectors and the major trends here, so starting with residential market trends. Important to kind of step back and think about, okay, what brings residents to New Milford? What's the differentiating factor? And we heard time and again, you know, it's the quality of life. People like the setting here, it's close to New York City, but far enough that you feel like you're in the country, just at the doorstep of the Litchfield Hills. You know, it's, it has a nice downtown, which is not something that everywhere has, so, you know, you have a really, a town that people want to live in. Housing prices, another positive here for New Milford is within that region, housing is relatively affordable, with a median home value of $300,000. It's actually, you know, the most affordable of all the different communities in the region when you're looking at the median. On the rental side, while rental units aren't in large supply, when they are, you know, when you can find them, they're actually pretty reasonably priced compared to the region. Housing supply is limited for certain types of housing, so dominated by single-family homes, so that kind of dictates the type of demographic that's able to live here. So those homes on the more inexpensive end, 200,000 to 300,000, those sell quickly, hard to find, those are definitely in demand, whereas we've seen the more expensive homes tending to sit on the market for a longer amount of time. On the rental side, there's high demand, vacancy rates are very low, 1.8% typically, you know, you want to see 5% to 10% is considered healthy, in that there's enough of a selection for people that are looking to rent to be able to find something. Housing supply trends, so the green is the region as a whole, the blue is. So the green is the region as a whole, the blue is New Milford. So kind of a slow downward trend in the amount of construction that's happened since that graph goes back to 1990. Housing demand. The message here is senior housing is the strongest in terms of demand based on current demographics. So we kind of looked at this as a status quo scenario. If the population trends kind of continue as is versus a growth scenario where the town's able to attract a different demographic based on, and going hand-in-hand with an economic development strategy. So certainly, housing and economic development are closely connected. You know, you need the homes available for the workers that will work at the businesses. And the businesses need housing for their employees so they can find the housing that they need. So, you know, current trajectory continuing as is, there will be continued strong demand for senior homes. Not so much for more of the rental, for non-seniors, starter homes, family homes. Whereas, you know, the growth scenario that would allow the town to capture a larger portion of regional growth that's expected, you know, there's opportunities for other, and other housing availability will help to do that. On the retail side, as you know, retail's clustered along Route 7 to 202, south of the bridge. We've got secondary districts in Gaylordsville along Route 202 up to Northville. And then certainly downtown is a retail cluster. Retail demand, so when we look at retail demand, we define a retail trade area. So that's the area where the majority of customers would come from. So retail in New Milford, where does the customer base come from? Certainly from throughout the town itself. And then extending northward quite a bit into the more rural communities up there that often come down to New Milford to do their shopping. So the population of the trade area is about 67,000 people. Key takeaway here is kind of five-year projected change. Like the community, New Milford itself, the trade area is projected to decline. So that could have, in terms of population, so that can have implications for the businesses.
What's the source you have there for this data?
It's Esri.
What is that?
It's a demographic and economic, kind of socioeconomic data provider. So there is some potential for new businesses here based on the retail leakage analysis that we did, really with a focus around businesses that are focused on services, experiential-type retail. So we know that online shopping is a trend. That impacts retailers of goods. But businesses that kind of focus on that services side or do what's called omni-channel retailing, where they're doing, they have both a brick-and-mortar store and an online presence. You know, that's kind of where retail is shifting. So about 150,000 square feet of retail could potentially be supported within that trade area and a good portion of that within New Milford. So it's kind of, you know, working toward a critical mass of interesting, unique retailers that will attract people to come here as a destination. And from outside of that trade area as well, attracting that sort of visitor spending. Office market trends. Majority of office space in New Milford is Class C. That tends to be older buildings. New Milford is, compared to other office locations, relatively off the beaten path. So you're not going to find a lot of large Class A-type office space. Downtown New Milford has almost no vacancy. But when you look at the town as a whole, it's about 9.5% vacancy. So there's about 42,000 square feet total of vacant office space compared to 1 million in the region. So there's a lot of office space out there. New Milford isn't necessarily the go-to place for office. So in general, this isn't a huge opportunity unless you have a highly specialized user that wants to locate New Milford and might require, you know, specialized space. What is an opportunity is light industrial space. So we heard a lot in our interviews that this type of space is really constrained in the town. Vacancies are very low, 1%. There's only, at the time that this study, or this data was pulled, about 33,000 square feet available in the town, which is very little for industrial space, which typically is in larger blocks of space. New Milford does have a lot of industrial land that's open and available for development, but not much in terms of move-in-ready space, which businesses are looking for. Typical blocks of space are in the 2,500 to 25,000-square-foot range in terms of what users are looking for. And we estimate total demand throughout New Milford of about, between 100,000 and 250,000 square feet of space. That would get up to a vacancy rate where there's more choice in the market. And this ties to that cluster of contractors, plumbers, electricians, the trades-type businesses that need this space and are looking to be in New Milford to serve their local client base. So that's kind of an overview of the trends. I'll turn it over to Chris there to go through strategies and recommendations, and then we can do projections after.
Yeah. So it's Tom laid out there. Certainly some challenges that as a community that we need to overcome, but also some opportunities within the market that could be capitalized on if the town decides to go in that direction. We worked with the committee to boil it down to three recommended initiative areas where we've laid out some potential action items that the town could do if they wanted to take advantage of some of the market trends that we identified. So the first one is to develop and communicate a consistent message and a shared identity for the town and the region. I know there's been a lot of starts and stops to trying to brand the town and create signage and things like that. And it's kind of, from someone who's not from the community, feels very scattered. And like, I don't know who New Milford is, I don't know what you're trying to be. And when developers or potential investors are considering the region, they're going to feel the same way. So I would love to see the town kind of take the lead, but also engage its partners on a strategic co-branding effort that is both, you know, digital, strong online presence, social media, traditional websites, but then also has a physical presence, not just downtown, but throughout the town. Again, working with your major partners, maybe the chamber, or be, you know, your education educators. Hire a branding and marketing firm who specializes in this, really understands community marketing and branding to help work with you on this. And then also have the physical signage and wayfinding program throughout the town. This is an example of a co-branding program from Douglas County, Georgia, where they're just outside of Atlanta, so they made their brands just outside the lines. And you can see how the different organizations involved kind of played off of the lines branding. But still, it feels very cohesive, it feels very much like it's from the same place. And that's just one example, and there are lots of others on the web that I could share if you are interested. I wanted to kind of just compare New Milford's logo, which is in the bottom right, to some of the other more updated logos in Connecticut communities. So you can see, they're still bringing their heritage and their past forward into their logos, but kind of updating the fonts, updating the feel a little bit to give themselves a stronger identity. Saratoga Springs also just implemented a, a couple of years ago, a great signage and wayfinding program that helps direct visitors to parking, to businesses. Saratoga's also very historic, has a lot of visitors that come through. And they did this in a way that's not invasive. It's meant for pedestrians and for people who are driving. And it's also directing people to not just, you know, public spaces, but to businesses. And it's been really well received by the public. And the important thing about this is too, is it's throughout the city. It's not just along Broadway there downtown, it's within the neighborhoods. So again, you get the whole feel throughout the city that it's very cohesive. And this is kind of what it looks like in person. So the second initiative is to grow the supply of industrial and commercial flex space. This would be around working with the development community to increase the supply of move-in-ready space. And the reason behind this is to kind of make sure that your businesses that are currently in town, that are in this type of space, who would like to grow, can do that in town. They don't have to move somewhere else to do that. Because as Tom mentioned, there's very limited options for a business looking to grow. Also, there's pent-up demand that we could potentially attract new business to the community with this type of space. So I'd like to invite Pat up here to talk a little bit about what that means from a land use perspective.
Sure. Hi, everybody. So our team was tasked with doing a land use zoning and infrastructure review, really focused on some of the key opportunity areas. In terms of industrial and commercial flex space, this is an area where you do have vacant land that is zoned for those purposes. And after reviewing the town's regs, your industrial and commercial regs are actually very good. They're very permissive, and they're very flexible. So you allow a lot of different types of uses in your industrial and commercial zones, which does provide maximum flexibility to the development community. We did have some minor recommendations about reducing the use of special permits for industrial flex space. But all in all, we don't see the zoning as a barrier to the development of this sector.
So the other actions around this are to identify strategic sites where you'd like to see additional development of this kind, and then understand what the funding gap is, why the development community isn't taking that step to make investments of their own and work with them to maybe fill that funding gap because there's pent-up market demand. But for some reason, the financial feasibility is not quite there yet in the market. And so understanding that would be what to do.
So can you expand a little bit on what you're calling pent-up demand? Where is that, where are you getting that from? And what makes you think there is pent-up demand?
Yeah, so this is based on past trends and then projections of those types of businesses in the region that use this type of space. And so based on the number of jobs that are projected to grow, I think it was five years, right, Tom? Over the next five years. And this is a big range, so we did kind of a low case and a high case scenario. That's where that demand is coming from. And we also spoke to a lot of developers in the commercial real estate community, and they were kind of saying the same thing.
Thank you.
Yeah. All right. The next initiative is to grow and diversify the housing market with kind of all types of different units, really focusing on the senior market, but also housing for younger folks who can come in and have housing that they can, are more attracted to, you know, diversify the options there. So this would relate to workforce attraction and retention. We spoke to a lot of employers in the town, and they all said that they're having challenges both attracting new employees to the community and then also retaining their existing workforce. And this is something that we're hearing across the country. But it's really, really tough in the Northeast right now for employers. And workforce is the number-one issue. So anything that any community can do to try to make it easier to move to a community, whether it's creating housing that's affordable or desirable, is really, really important. And then, of course, the growing senior population. If you would like to retain that population as they age, they need some just different types of housing that's more accommodating to an aging workforce, or an aging residential population. So the draft actions around this are through the P O C D process to identify areas in the town for rental housing development. Consider modifying the zoning in those strategic areas to accommodate that type of development. To work to create some tax incentives around TIF and tax abatements to incentivize the development community. There's a lot of approved projects out there, but not a lot of developers actually putting the shovel in the ground. And so we think that while there's market demand, there's not the financial incentives, again, there to have a positive ROI for the development community. So they need, you know, some partnership there. And really, again, getting the word out around marketing and branding. But Pat, you want to talk about zoning?
Sure. So this is always a much stickier subject in all the towns we work in in Connecticut, especially for areas that don't currently have higher-density housing, deliberating, you know, where should that housing go? We know that there have been projects discussed in the Route 7 corridor, but we also understand that that's where your limited land for commercial industrial flex space is as well. And I think one of the most important aspects of this action is to identify which areas of town you really want to steer that rental housing if it's desired by the community. And that's definitely a community-wide discussion as part of your P O C D process to clearly articulate where you'd like to see that type of housing occur, whether it's in the Route 7 corridor, in the downtown, or along the riverfront. And that should precede any zoning changes as well. It'll really also speak to the development community and give them a better idea of what exactly you're looking for. And that way, housing may be able to move forward without going through the Affordable Housing Appeals Procedure, which is what a lot of the projects have gone through in recent years. You do have a overlay zone along the Husatonic River, which is a flexible overlay zone that can be landed on individual properties and allow housing there. And that type of model may be something the town wants to consider moving forward, especially if it's considering expanding housing into the Route 7 corridor. And that gives you the flexibility of determining whether or not that can move forward on a site-by-site basis rather than just doing a blanket approval.
All right. And then the final initiative is to continue to grow downtown and activate the riverfront. New Milford is so unique and so special that you have a beautiful green, which is such a competitive advantage when you're thinking about what other communities in the region are trying to build, you know, trying to create downtowns. You have one. So the initiative here is to continue to support the businesses and the development of that area and use that as one of the things that you can really use in marketing and traction when you're talking economic development. The challenges around this are concerns over capacity for infrastructure. I know that's something that's being talked about in terms of transportation and parking. And then also, you know, the appetite for implementation. This is not easy, right? This type of development is significant. It takes a lot of strong leadership and a lot of vision to implement successfully. So it's something that, you know, everyone needs to kind of be on the same page about when you're trying to do difficult work like this. But continuing to build support and continuing to move towards that vision is really, really important. So with that, I will invite Lebo back up.
So I want to thank you all for paying attention. You also got the long version emailed to you that has a lot of the backup for all this data, where it came from, if there's any questions. Please feel free to contact myself. I can put you in touch with Krista if there's a need. But, you know, just because we see trends, and some of the trends are downward, I think it presents New Milford with the most incredible opportunities because we are so united in this town for economic development. We have a mayor with a vision for economic development. He has his platform running for office, and he is fulfilling that promise for economic development. We have a town council here who's committed to hiring an economic development director. You're putting dollars towards economic development. We have a plan of conservation and development that is recognizing as one of its goals to create a strong and diverse economy and improve job opportunities for residents. We have schools who are working now, our superintendent in adult education are working on workforce development programs so that we can have the employees here for skilled jobs, STEM jobs, and trade jobs. So everyone in this town is moving forward. Our businesses are working hard to try to help the town increase its businesses. That was evidenced at our recent Best of the Best Awards Dinner this Thursday night, where there was an excitement in the air from the business community that I haven't felt in years. We have a citizenry that's committed to economic development. And when surveyed earlier, mid-2019, 84% of them were concerned about the lack of jobs in New Milford. 89% want to see the town focus on cleanup and redevelopment of ground fields. 92% want to see the town create a clearer development vision for Route 202 and Route 7. And 95% believe the town should focus on better marketing to support economic development opportunities. And lastly, 89% believe the town should promote job training opportunities. We have put seeds in place here. We've taken first steps. I mentioned the hiring of a dedicated economic development director. The local corporation for economic development, this council designated them as the town's development agency. As you know, the Riverfront Revitalization Committee will be coming here in several months with a plan to present to you for the riverfront, for downtown. That will be a catalyst for development throughout the entire town. Downtown is the bridge between Route 7 and Route 202, and our north and our south. And the downtown energy will spread out throughout the entire town. You know, we are working on improving our infrastructure. We have a roads committee and a public works department working hard to improve our local roads' walkability. The mayor's beginning steps with passenger rail feasibility, looking for a first step of a shuttle service to Metro North. a shuttle service to Metro North. We're looking to extend our multi-purpose river trail. We're partnering with local businesses and educational institutions, again, for opportunities for jobs. I just think all the pieces are here in place, and I believe that this town council and our town has the political will to make things happen and to reverse these trends. I see nothing but a wonderful future for New Milford, where our grand list will grow, our job market will grow, we will have homes for seniors and families and millennials alike. And I thank you all for letting us have this opportunity.
Thank you. Thank you.
I don't know if you have any questions.
Any questions? Anybody have any questions? Tom?
Just have one mention rail. And I know, Krista, when we had, there were three of us here that sat with you. I didn't see any mention of the transportation trends or any of that in the report. Is that something that we could talk about in future date, or is it something you just didn't have enough information on?
Yeah, that was something that we definitely talked about and didn't detail it in the report because we were trying to focus on concrete projects, you know, and project trends based on things that we were certain. But the initiatives that we outlined are adaptable, so if rail were to come online and be an opportunity, all of the actions and initiatives that we developed would be still supported and supportive of that. So that was definitely something that we talked about a lot internally and wanted to make sure that we were aware of.
Are there any sort of traffic trends, or is there anything that we could get in the future, maybe not from you guys or researchers, if we can see where some of the trends are? Years ago in economic development, we knew that a lot of our workforce was coming from the Torrington northern area, coming to New Milford, and the people from New Milford were going south, and the people that, and everybody was just kind of going down and coming up, going down in the morning. What are the traffic trends or transportation trends in this region?
Yeah, we detailed inflow and outflow patterns within the report. Tom, do you remember the details of that right now? I'm putting you on the spot.
Yeah, I mean, so we looked at those trends when we were identifying one of the comparison region, which I talked about earlier. And yeah, I mean, what you're saying is generally the case. A lot of people from New Milford travel south to Danbury to jobs. And then, you know, for example, we talked to Kimberly Clark, a lot of their workforce comes from the north. But the kind of town-by-town numbers are in the appendix of the report.
Okay, so that is available in the larger?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Speaking of rail service, did you do any analysis on what the economic impact could be to New Milford should rail service come?
That wasn't a part of our story.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Great. Thank you very much. Thank you, everyone.
Number seven, item number seven is public works. Do you want to get an update?
Good evening. I was just going to give you a brief overview of the road program for last year and what we're going for the next year. So I'm going to try to give you just like a 20,000-foot level overview of what we're doing. First thing I'd do is just briefly introduce the municipal road committee. We've got John Whitman, who's the chairman, John Oaks, Rob O'Connor, Joe Goodell, Jared Lukovitz. I don't think Thomas Alton has.
Thank you for coming tonight presenting. We appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Working with them is our current DPW team, which includes myself. Mike Boucher is not here tonight. Mike is traveling. He is the highway foreman. We have a new assistant foreman, Steve Francisco. Ed Burns, last day was today, so I'll mention that. Ed was a very valuable member of our team. We now think, you know, Steve is acting as interim at this moment.
And Jack, just for the edification of the town council, Eddie took a position as an owner now in a company, family company. So we wish him a lot of success.
Oh, we do. It was an opportu, I mean, selfishly, I didn't want him to go. But, you know, at some point, you gotta, you know, you gotta encourage young people to do what they want to do. This was a great opportunity for him, so we wish him the best. Marbrosa, who's our, who's our design, road design engineer, Greg Gardner, has been with us for quite a while. He's the, he's our inspector, probably our chief inspector. He's also the road construction supervisor. Jason High, he's our AutoCAD, and just a wealth of information, has been with the town for quite a while. And Lorraine Vidi, she is in our office, and currently she has picked up the responsibility for making sure we stay on budget. She's going to be tracking our budgets in the future, checking the change orders, making sure before we pay anybody that we have a change order in place. I do want to just point out right off the bat that this is a collaborative effort. This is an effort between us and the municipal road committee. They meet monthly, but I think I see John Oaks and John Whitman probably on a weekly basis. I see Joe frequently. So we have an opportunity to talk, and we talk about what we're doing. I'd like to start off by just do a quick recap of what we've done in 2019. And a lot of, some of this was done before I got here, just stand there. I'm new to the table, and so I probably give a lot of credit to other people. They did, there was, there's a little bit of carryover from 2018, some punchless items and other work. So the group finished 3.1 miles of roads from 2018. Those were done. We've signed off on them, and they are complete at this time. In 2019, what I'd like to point out is that we've, we've taken a hard look at our maintenance of the roads, our pothole maintenance, how we respond to the public. We want to make sure that we're responsive, or we want to also move from being reactive to proactive. You know, it's always better to be proactive. You get less calls, the roads are in better condition. So we're moving and looking ahead and making this a proactive approach. We're spending a lot of time emphasizing maintenance on the roads. I think you'll see that our staff is out there doing a lot of work. I'm judging from the number of calls we're getting that it's effective, but we're continuing to try to make sure that it continues to be more effective. We spend, we're emphasizing response time. If you call into our office, we want to make sure that we respond back to you, at least with an email right away, so that you know that we got it. That includes weekends. Our phones go off, and we try to make sure either Mike, or it'll be now Steve, myself, Lorraine, somebody will get back to you and let you know that we've got that email. We're going to take a look at it and get back to you what the action's going to be. So we're working on our response time in our follow-up. Safety, we're making sure our roads are safe. That's a, you know, as part of, I know that we just had this presentation, I think a big part of any presentation for any, any town is the safety of your roads. So you probably saw new guardrails, guiderails going up around town. We'll continue to do that. There's a part in our budget that every year we're going to replace or build new guardrails that are also consistent with what the town's look is. I don't, you know, I think you're going to see that as we go out. We're not going to stick a nice Chinese guardrail on one of our dirt roads. We're going to make sure it's consistent with the, with the area that we're doing it. Pothole maintenance, there's a lot of, there's a lot of discussion about pothole maintenance. The town, before I got here, purchased a pothole machine. They go out now and they put hot material down into potholes. It lasts a lot longer. I know there's been a lot of discussion, a lot of ways that the public works departments have looked at how we can do better on potholes. Personally, you take a bag of coal patch, you put it out on a Sunday, and on Monday it's out. You gotta put a swarm of coal patch in there. So I think you'll see that this year with that new machine, the number of potholes that we get calls on has gone down tremendously. Mike's getting much, much, much fewer calls. The material we're putting in it is lasting a lot longer. Some data is that the pothole task, and we have a thing, a computer program called Cardograph, you probably are familiar with it. I just asked Mike just for some information. Mike said that his pothole task, those are, those are jobs that we give to the staff, have decreased from 364 last year to 77 this year. The number of pothole requests has gone down by more than 75%. So consistently, we're seeing a reduction. I know Mike in a recent meeting with the mayor said his goal would be to get to the point we don't need the pothole machine anymore. I'm sorry.
Just curious, the pothole machine, you know, but because of less, less people and stuff, has it paid for itself? Or, I mean, not the whole way, but is that a projection where it actually pays for itself?
It will. I, you know, I don't have that exact number right now, but we do track that. The cost of the, I don't, I don't even think we've bought any coal patch up this year.
Zero.
Zero. That's why I thought.
And last year we did, and now I'm not a ton, like, specific tons, but I remember Jack and Mike at our weekly meeting had said that we did last year the equivalent of 250,000 pounds of coal patch, and we were using six employees. So this year, we used one guy on a pothole machine, no coal patch.
What's the average salary of those guys? 75,000? When the machine was $275,000? The math is pretty easy. It's already paid for itself.
And the safety of the roads, I mean, in the winter time, you get a lot of calls from people who've broken springs, broken tires, things like that. We don't get those right now.
Listen, I watched, I watched coal patch being put in at 7:00 in the morning. It was going by, it was out of the hole by 10:00, three hours later, for years and years and years. This was one of the smartest pieces of apparatus this town has bought in the last 50 years, probably next to their fire trucks.
I'm not sure Metcalf would agree with you on that. Another program we have that we instituted this year is the ice program. But, and what we, we call it the ice program, what we do is we go out and we look at places where you have a lot of ice on the side of the road. Last year, we identified areas that we thought we should do more drainage or road reconfiguration. We did seven projects this year, and we monitor them, and so far, we haven't, the weather hasn't been totally conducive, but we're knocking wood so far. It looks to have been effective. So we're looking to continue that program going into the, into next year. So that's what we've done for as far as maintenance.
And Jack, sorry to interrupt, but why is that important for us on the council? So we're being proactive and doing ice prevention. What that means is for years, there's been areas where the water's flowing over the road course, which then refreezes, which means that a DPW driver has to go back to that area, apply material, as well as their time. So this way, when we correct that, they don't have to go back, apply material, which saves us on material costs, and the driver doesn't have to go back out. So we've become way more efficient. So I'd like to thank Jack and the DPW team for doing that.
Can I throw one thing on top of that? That saw destroys the roads. So every time we go back out and throw more and more material down, it grows the life expectancy of that road as well, just as an add-on.
So I'm glad you think things are better around town, but I have to say, within the northern section of town, and the roads are a disaster. Victoria Hill, New Preston Hill, Connolly Road are absolutely disastrous. That's the only way you can say it. Going up New Preston Hill, and I don't know if you're aware of it, in fact, I was planning on calling. There are two areas where the water's flowing over the road. I went up there this morning at 7:30, and the ice was like coming right across the road. There was like two spots up there. So that really needs serious planning because I'm really worried somebody's going to come flying along there and just go right off the road. But the roads are a mess. The potholes are terrible. Everything that's been repaired and fixed is a mess again. So I don't know what's happening, but somehow that whole area's been neglected.
Okay, we'll take a look at it.
Thank you.
Yep. I'm going. The program this year includes chip seal, mill and pave, reclamation, and full reconstruction. The group did 5.5 miles of chip seal roads. There's different technologies that we use. We use, and we're looking at, trying to better evaluate each road specifically and select the technology that's perfect for that, or not perfect, but is better for that. And that includes sometimes to do nothing. Sometimes we, we do a, just a crack seal. We go out and you'll see the little ribbons that we do. Another technology we haven't tried recently in New Milford, but we're looking at doing next year, is a fog seal. We put a, basically just they go out with a machine and they fog the road. And you have to stay up for about a half hour, 45 minutes. It penetrates the first few layers, and what it does is it's able to extend the life of the road. And that's one of the things we talk about preventive maintenance. We're able to like extend that life so that we don't have to come back and reconstruct that road as frequently. We do, we do a chip seal. There's the standard chip seal, which we've been using the last few years, which is you use a material, you know, a mastic material, you put down, you put a stone, some sand, you go back and sweep it up afterwards. There's also a rubber ice chip seal. If you go up to Sherman, you take 39 North, you'll see the state has used that. It's a little more expensive, but it has a different, a different longevity to it, probably lasts a little longer. I've had experience with that in other towns, and it works very well. We also use mill and pave, where we take off two inches and you put a new course of two inches down on top of that. We also do a full-depth reclamation, which is, that's, we did a lot of that this year. Well, we did quite a bit of that this year, and we're moving more and more to that. And then we did a full box out on some of the road. So just statistically, we did about 5.5 miles of chip seal, 1.2 miles of mill and pave, about 1.4 miles of reclamation, and 5.3 miles of total reconstruction. So that was what we did this year. We've also, the road committee, we've had a discussion, what did we learn? And we were making some modifications to prefer going forward to see, you know, we've learned a lot, and we're trying to make some adjustments based on what we learned. We talk about this in our meetings, and we're adjusting. So if you look into 2020, we're going to continue with the road range. You're going to see increased amount of tree work. Unfortunately, the emerald ash wood has essentially just about created 100% loss of the ash trees. So ash trees alongside the road are going to have to be removed. We are renting a truck ourselves. We're going to try, we're going to see how it works and see if we can't do some of the lower work, and that way defer some of the cost, you know, remove some of the cost of hiring a contractor to do all the trees for us. We're going to continue to do preventive maintenance work, pothole. We'll continue to work on the reduction of pothole and long-term repeat potholes. The ice program, we're looking at six more roads at least this year. Chip seal, we're planning on five point, this is, this is some information that the road committee, the road committee gives us a list. We work with them, and we come up with a final list. Chip seal, we're looking at about 5.2 miles of roads this year. Mill and pave, about 1.6 miles. Reclamation, we're going, we're going to shift more of the construction to reclamation until it costs less per mile than full box out. So that's about 6.7 miles. We are still doing some full reconstruction with 1.4 miles. And I do want to note that there are going to be two large drainage projects, Brentwood and Cobbler. These are, these are going to be a reconstruction of those sections of the road. There's just, there's old drainings there. It's not the standard drainage, so it's interesting. There's very large basins under those, so we're going to do those this year. Going forward, we have already, working with the road committee, put together schedules for 2021 through 2023, kind of schedules. We've worked on that. And the idea is we're trying to get so that we, we stay at no more than $6 million a year for total road reconstruction. And that would be all of the things that I've mentioned. I'd just like to just briefly touch on how we select roads, how we come up with and select the roads that we're going to do. We have, we have the software called Cardograph, and there's something, there's an evaluation method called pavement condition index. We use that to tell us what condition the road is. Taking that and street scan, which is another, another process that we use, hiring a company to come out and drive the roads, come up with a number for us. The road committee does their own drive around, evaluation, and they prepare an initial list. That initial list comes to public work. We actually go out and do a boots-on-the-ground inspection of the road. You know, you can see so much with cameras, but we actually, we walk the road, and we check pipes. We have, we purchase the cameras here, we're looking at pipes, we do coring of the road, we do some test pits. We come up with what we think is another, we either validate their list, we may add to it or subtract from it. And then we, we put together our prioritization list. That's put together by the DPW staff. We go back, we put some numbers together, then we come back and we, we meet up with the road commission, and we finalize our list, and then we go forward. As far as our road program management is the last thing I'll touch on, we're looking, we're emphasizing cost-effective, long-term road condition management. If you look, what I've been, talking to the mayor and the road commission about is, you look at a 20-year average on our road. And so what we're trying to do is do something, if we do, if we work on a road this year, and then over the next 20 years, we'd like to touch the road three times in that span. Maybe this year we do, we do a full, full-deep reclamation. Seven years from now, we may do a chip seal, fog seal, and touch that road again. Seven years after that, we do the same thing. And then 20 to 21 hundred years, we come back and we, we have to reclaim or rebuild that road. And that's, that's a industry norm if you're able to maintain, maintain your roads properly. We've made some adjustments based on our experience this year. We've learned a lot. We've had conversations with the road committee. We had meetings with the mayor, and we've gone over what we're doing. Budgeting, we are working closely with the finance department. We're, Lorraine's taking, is taking that information, working with the finance department, making sure that we're staying on budget, that the bills are being paid. We have change orders in place. We've modified the invoicing and change order process for the projects. Planning-wise, we're working collaboratively with the municipal road committee. We're evaluating each road individually. So there's not one, one shoe fits off. We're going, we're going to select the proper technology and the cost for each road based on what the finish that road is. We've increased the size of the engineering staff in the public works department. We're doing more of the engineering there. We are evaluating our specifications and contracts, modifying those to meet some changes that we felt were necessary. We're also working on the contracts. We may change how we purchase materials, whether the contractor purchases it, or the town supplies those materials. We'll look at keeping those costs down. We're also changing the way we, we're looking at using approved suppliers, the service contracts wherever possible. And the last thing is, we are doing more and more of the inspection with our staff.
Any questions for Jack? Chris?
So a few things. Jack, thank you for the information, the report, and being here tonight. And a big thank you to the roads committee. You all do a great job, I think, working with DPW. I certainly appreciate everything you all are doing. Just some feedback, response time. I've been really impressed, especially seeing DPW employees like Mike Boucher on Facebook responding to community members like that and getting things done. So that's been very impressive. Safety, just one thing. You mentioned safety of the roads. Is there a focus also, safety for our DPW employees?
Absolutely. That's number one. I mean, work at the whole.
Good. And the drainage, I'm really happy to see on a lot of roads, I've noticed, some of the roads have been redone, just these, just beautiful, you know, little curbs around the grates and the drainage put in place, and it's working well. And as the mayor said, I think spending a little bit of money on that is still, it's saving money in the long run, and it's using taxpayer funds much more efficiently. So I appreciate that. Other than that, but, you know, you guys have been doing great work out there, so thank you.
Thank you.
Mike?
Yeah, thank you to the committee and to you too, Jack. Any update about bridges in New Milford? It says road plan, so I just thought I'd...
Yep, bridge plans, we're working on those right now. We are finalizing the plan for Camerac Road. We've looked at that several times. Right now, Freeman Engineer is finalizing the design. We're going with a squashed metal pulver there to replace the existing pulver. It's going to be larger, so it's going to meet the requirements that we have. That should go out to bid shortly. I met, and we are finalizing our plans for, excuse me, My Pond Road and Gaylor Road. Those two are, they're 95% done. I just have to give them a final review of those and the top of the state. Internally, we, because they're local roads, Trineski is, I've looked at that, it's gone out. I've talked with the engineer. We're looking at how we can build that bridge. I've looked at some of the comments that have come back, and I think when I talked to the mayor, I was actually going to have another meeting about that bridge and talking with the residents in that area. Trying to keep the bridge in keeping with the scenic road ordinance. In Maryall Bridge, we've gone back, I don't want to say the drawing board, but we've gone back, and I've challenged the engineering firm, WMC, to look at that bridge and see where the, I think one of the objections was the amount of time that we've taken, how long we have to be in place. What I've challenged them is come up with a design such that we would bid the bridge in the fall, issue the contract, and I've done this before. You tell the contractor to use the time from the fall to April 1st to have all of the materials brought, everything, anything they can pre-cast, prefabricate, have it on site. You close the bridge April 1st, and then you take that construction time and you compress it. And so I was reading, you know, the minutes of the meetings and things. I think that one of the main objections to that bridge was the amount of time you would have to detour. And your detours around here are not short. So we're trying to take the compressed time. It's going to be inconvenient. You know, there's just no way around it. Unless you want to build a second bridge, that's expensive. So I think, you know, for a short, inconvenient amount of time, we'll compress that time. So I've challenged WMC to come up with that.
Thank you.
Katie? Thank you, Jack, and thanks the road committee. I really liked when you said you've learned a lot by working together, because learning a lot means efficiency, means hopefully we're saving some money. You mentioned something about a truck for the tree cutting. Did you say you rented a truck?
We have, we've issued a PO to the company, and we are renting the truck to try it and see. We have a contract with a contract, with a contract that, I think you spend about $190,000 a year on tree trimming. That's still...
Could you do me a favor? Just make a note to yourself. Please check that and let us know exactly.
It is $190.
It is?
Yep.
Oh, okay. If he says so.
Okay, I checked.
Just seemed high.
No, it's actually...
Okay. So you're renting a truck?
Yeah, we're renting a truck, and our staff is going to do a certain amount of the tree trimming also. So that, there are branches of things that, instead of sending a contractor out at a given hourly rate, we're going to see how that works.
When you say that you have some men who can trim the trees also, you mean the truck's coming with personnel?
No.
Oh, you're going to use our personnel?
Yeah, use our...
Okay, and they're trained and understand the use and the safety, et cetera, et cetera. Is this a bucket truck?
Yes.
And we, as a council, approved a bucket truck purchase last year.
Right.
So before...
We did that, I...
Right. So before we go out and invest the money, we want to make sure that our crew is able to perform the task.
Yeah, that's my concern, is that it is a bit of a, you know, specialty to be able to do that. So that's great. And then just one thing, you mentioned change orders a few times in your presentation. And I'm just curious, do you have a lot of change orders? I mean, if Lorraine is tracking them, and that's, you know, change orders are usually a rather expensive part of anything that involves a change order. So I'm just curious to you, why you have so many?
Actually, we don't have, I wouldn't say overabundance of them. It's just a matter of the process being, all the years I've worked in engineering, you issue a change order, and then you do the work. A few times, I just want to be sure the process is correct, and that we have our, we dot our i's, cross our t's, and that a change order is issued so that the contractor has that in place. And we know, you know, we know what that monetary value is going to mean to the project.
Right. So the, but the process should be that the change order, before it becomes a change order, somebody's discussing why you need it, correct?
Exactly.
Okay, then you get the price. Then you decide if that particular price is right for what you need, and then you go forward, right?
Exactly.
Okay, good. Well, thanks again, and I appreciate the road committee too.
Tom?
I want to just thank the road committee. You know, I'm very proud to see the work that this committee has done. It was one of my desires years ago when I first ran. I think I put it on my wish list for three elections in a row for the oversight, and the oversight has been amazing. And I've got to also go back to Jack. The new leadership in the DPW has been transformative, I feel. The people that I know in this town that have spoken to me said they have not seen the morale there as good ever in all the years. And I think some of the old roads that may still be disasters was from some of the poor leadership. And in my opinion, the less than adequate engineering that was here for many, many years. And I want to congratulate you on taking over that department with the new vigor of that group, and the new town engineers, and all the folks that are working to make the roads program and the roads with the longevity that we expected years ago. And I used to question the former folks here during budget time. They would tell me they would, it should last five to seven years, but they kept coming back to us every three years to redo the roads. It didn't really add up for a guy who's a contractor, and I'm extremely proud of the work you guys are giving. Keep it up. Thank you. You have my support. I think the roads look the best that I've seen since I started driving here in 1977 at 16-years-old. Thank you.
Any other questions? Jack, thank you. Thank you, DPW staff. Thank you. Next.
Item eight, motion to approve the creation of the position Community Resource Officer. That's item 8A.
Mr. Belair.
Is there a second?
Second.
What do you think, councilman? So the Community Resource Officer Specialist Position is really a position that is going to be introducing and making sure that the public knows the best way to work with all of our departments. It's funny, I actually had a councilperson come into my office to ask about the job, and really wanted to learn more about it. And I was discussing how your average resident really doesn't know what the process is to go through and get your permits, or doesn't know how to work effectively with all of your town departments. And as we're going through and having the conversation, another resident came through and said they were stopping in to help somebody get the permit process done. It just shows the value of where, having someone in town that is going to be able to show what the value of our departments are, be able to describe how to best work with them, where our resources are, and to brand out the town in Milford. That's what this position is looking to create.
Walter?
Greg, you're going to have to help me out here a little bit. This sounds like a spin-off of the job of what the economic...
Great question. So economic development, really looking to bring business into New Milford, is to grow our grand bus, to grow the resources in New Milford. This position is working from the internal perspective to show what we offer, to be able to advertise it so that our community knows where our resources are.
Dave?
Go ahead, Dave.
I'll admit, I was that councilperson.
Were you applying?
The only question I have with this is the evaluation process for the position. It's based on union. It's exempt, so...
This position's going to report to the mayor.
Is there an instrument, I guess, for evaluation?
There is an interest that's being put in place through the mayor's office right now.
Okay.
I think this is a great idea. I really like it. I just don't agree with the education training experience. I really think this is a college-level thing. There's a lot going on here, and it's sophisticated, and working with the economic development, I think it requires more than a lot of education. I would like to see that be the last.
Okay.
So you mentioned, you know, somebody that can help people navigate through our various departments. So things such as, I'm going to turn 65, and I want to know more about the senior center, that what they offer me, and the call, and I don't really know what to ask for. So will this person be making that, facilitating the use of things, not just our building and planning departments and things, but the senior center for one, our youth agency, parks and rec?
Parks and rec, social services. It's going to be working with all the departments.
To make it more streamlined, to know where to go. So if I said just what I just said to you, I'm going to be 65. I don't know, what do I, who do I see in this town to find out what I have available to me, housing, rides, stuff like that? That's the type of thing.
That's the exact design of this position.
Any other discussion?
So aside from that, is this person going to be working with potential builders, et cetera, going through permit processes, or not?
Would be able to help people, it's really more about, and correct me if I'm wrong, Pete, but more about helping the residents through processes. It's not necessarily in the business development side, where you're helping the businesses through, but would be the resource for an individual that doesn't understand what the process is, or where their next step in the process is.
Okay, so more residents as opposed to... Okay, got it.
Impress conferences on here, so that's a biggie.
And this is all about easing the ease of execution, because as we know now through both the report we got today, through other of our economic development activities, that the community that has a quicker ease of execution, more people tend to invest here. More people tend to give a higher quality of say in their government, which is important, and it just makes it easier and more efficient. And with that efficiency, we can create other opportunities within our town government. So that's basically what this is going to help us do.
So all I would ask is, because I think we're adding headcount here, right? Which is...
But we've also reorganized and have reduced headcount this year.
Right, okay.
So, and there's already money in the budget for this year, for this position, for now, till the beginning of the year, and this will be in the budget.
And there's no healthcare to this position?
No benefits, good. I just want to make sure that regardless of that, that we, you know, we're adding a new position, that a year after the person starts, we, you know, we can see some metrics.
Absolutely.
Did the taxpayer get their $50,000 pass?
Absolutely.
Just a correction, may I? It says Community Resource Officer. I'm assuming that that's type of...
Yes.
Yeah, in the agenda, it says officer.
Police officer, and schools, and social officer.
So it's a specialist?
Yes.
I think it's a good idea. I just kind of have to, I mean, I'm not saying that someone at the high school department is not qualified to meet it, but, you know, it's got to be the right person. So...
Is this cut and stone, that this is just going to be a high school? I mean, it can just be renewed?
No, this would be a minimum qualification. So...
I think a minimum qualification should be, you know, the graduate degree communications. Something along that line. I mean, you're just talking about reaching out and establishing relationships with key employers of the community. This has to be a person that has those skills. You don't get those skills at high school.
I think you can, high school.
Sure you can, yeah. Unless you have a college education, you're going to have the skills to interact with people?
No, that's not what I said. That's, you're putting words in my mouth.
Okay, well, explain yourself, because it sounds pretty, you know, it sounds pretty harsh.
No, I'm sorry.
That people that don't have a college education can do this job.
We have a motion on the floor, and we have a second. Any other discussion?
I'd just like to ask Greg a question. So should someone that, in interviewing with you and the mayor, whatever, come along, wants a job, and other people come along who are not appropriate? So if I understand, you want a person who's appropriate, and if the person who comes along and doesn't have a college education, that's one facet of everything. So you're just leaving it open. So, because there are people who don't have a complete college education, who have a lot of, a lot of what people like, a lot of personality, you know, salesmanship or whatever, so...
People that really know the town and the offerings of the town.
Mr. Lawson?
So perhaps we could put desired as...
I can only go, I can find the way it is. I'm okay with it. If you hire a...
I understand. I'm just saying, perhaps in the future, that's why I asked about an evaluation of this position. I think if we get a, and I'm not even sure one year is an adequate measure, but I think we can all agree that the position is needed, and we'll look for a fit.
Walter?
Greg, have you had any kind of interaction with the person with these qualifications? I really have, I really have no problem. Again, this is a newbie. Give it a try, let's see how it works. If we can make adjustments as we move along, because we always have to be.
Any other discussion? There's a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you.
Item 8B, motion to approve the upgrade of the payroll specialist position from a grade 11 to payroll administrator, grade 12.
So if I could speak to this...
Second.
Thank you. If I could speak to this, this particular grade, as you saw in your packets, the particular employee that were working outside of their job description for, Greg, how many years now?
Since the implementation really of the unit, so even before that. So we're going on about four years.
Okay, so for four years, this particular, this is a union position. So this person has been working outside their job description for the last four years, has been doing more. So in speaking with the union, we have upgraded this position to where it should be, as you can see in your job titles, to a grade 12. And to comply with that work, we just need to upgrade it to a 12. Am I correct?
That's exactly correct.
I totally support upgrading to the 12.
Because it could be a problem, right? You could grieve...
If we don't address this, I would anticipate an issue with working outside the class. I would anticipate that.
Aside from union rules and regulations, would you say that the person going to a 12 would be a more fair, equitable thing, or what the person has more responsibilities?
We've had numerous meetings with the union, with the individual. We did a full job evaluation on this. With this adjustment, I think the individual that's in the job and the job in itself will be paid adequately.
And we're covering ourselves in the future, because, you know, not every staff member stays around forever, that the person that's hired will be a grade 12 and will be capable of doing all of those things.
Exactly.
Right off the bat, without years of experience.
Correct, and we'll be looking for, and that'll be part of the recruitment process to kick off someone.
Great. Thank you, Greg.
Any other discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Thank you, Greg.
Thank you very much, everybody.
Item nine, I have to make a note, we have a typographic issue here. This motion will be to move on the formation of a permanent committee for the Riverfront Revitalization Committee, Revitalization Committee, not a temporary, that's a typo. The rest of the motion is, it will be as per the town charter, section 705A, and per the council vote of January 9th, 2020, citing the change in the term from four and three years to two and one year.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you.
Item 10, the youth agency, a motion to approve a request from the youth agency to accept a donation of $1,200 from the New Milford Rotary. This donation is to be used for providing adventure-based activities for the agency's junior review board, juvenile review board, and other high-risk child, children's activities. They're requesting this donation be placed in a revenue account. You listening, Greg? 1-0-4-4-1-9-0-0-4-3-0-5, and that a subsequent amount of $1,200 be placed in the expense
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you.
Do we have an update from the finance?
Yep. Greg?
Update from the finance.
This is a financial report for the month of December, through the month of December. I recently invested the internal service fund as a liquid money market account. It is currently yielding 1.55%. At that rate, a balance, on a balance of approximately $3 million, simple interest will yield approximately $46,500 per year without compounding. The mayor and I are currently conducting budget hearings with the department heads. The reviews will conclude this week, and we'll be working on the mayor's recommended budget for delivery next month. Revenues. Revenues are at 59% of budget. On a straight-line basis, we would expect to be at 50% of budget. Tax collections are at 65.2% of budget overall, with current taxes at 65.5%. Both interest, income and stiff interest are running at 51.9% and 63.3% respectively. Land use revenues are at a robust 83% of budget. Building permits are also running well ahead of budget at 95.5% of budget. The recycling revenues are at 41.3% of budget, and they're watching at this point, as I do not believe we're going to meet budget in that category. On the expenditure side of the budget, expenditures are at 52.9% with encumbrances. Without encumbrances, they are at 47.2% of revised budget, which is 2.8% below on a straight-line basis. Tax rebates are at 78.2% of budget and will be an issue in the near future. The police department is at 50% of budget with encumbrances and 49.1% without. Overtime, dispatchers overtime are, are still running over budget, both at 59, 59.5%, and we exceeded our budget at 108.1% respectively in dispatchers overtime. The public works budget overall is at 59.4% of budget with encumbrances and 44.4% without. Parks and rec are at 56% of budget with encumbrances and 46.5% without. In summary, on a cash basis, revenues are at $60,867,025.42, and expenditures are at $47,259,240.40, leaving the town with a positive cash flow of $13,607,785.2.
Any questions for Greg?
Thank you, Greg. Appreciate the update.
Thank you.
Item 11B, motion to transfer funds in excess of $5,000 from the finance salary account, number 1-0-4-1-1-9-0-0-5-1-0-0-0, to economic development salary account, 1-0-4-6-0-6-0-3-0-0-5-1-0-0-0.
Second.
Thank you. And this is basically, as we've, as we're looking to reorganize, currently our grant writer was under our finance department, and we are moving that position into the economic development position, where the grant writer will be reporting to, and she already is, to Karen, our economic development director. So, this is just an in-house kind of reorganization.
So, I'd like to get this done before the budget is presented to you, because you'll see, if we don't do this, there'll be a big disparity between what the current budget is in economic development and what the economic development director has asked for in the salary line.
So, we have a first and second. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Thank you, Greg. Next is economic development. Karen's going to give us a presentation. Karen?
So, I've got three items this evening for discussion with the council. And first item A is to discuss tax deferral. And we currently have an ordinance for tax deferral, and it, what this refers to is something that has been enabled by the general statutes of the state of Connecticut that allows communities like New Milford and others to be able to offer an incentive to people to invest in those communities in businesses, and new construction in particular. So, we adopted several years ago a tax deferral ordinance, and unfortunately, in the last several, we, we changed it in about 2015, but since that period of time, we really haven't used it. And as we heard earlier this evening, we really need for people to invest in this community, build more buildings for businesses to locate in. We have very low vacancy, in particular, in manufacturing space and in flex industrial space. And so, what are the things in our control that we can do that will spur and spark some activity? And so, one of the things that I've looked at and communicated with the Economic Development Commission about for the last three months has been the issue of our current tax deferral ordinance, comparing it to other communities in the western part of Connecticut. And then, here is a recommendation that the Economic Development Commission has spent three months reviewing, and again, several debates about what level is appropriate. And so, this, this presentation looks at some examples, and also includes what their recommendation is. And we do have, I want to point out numerous members of the commission and also the Economic Development Corporation here tonight to answer questions or participate in the discussions, should you want to hear from them. So, currently, we have pretty much two areas identified for tax deferral. And, and the deferral refers to, so if somebody comes in and they buy a piece of land and they build a building, that for a certain period of time, they would pay less than 100% of the increase in the property taxes on the real estate. They would always pay whatever the existing amount is. So, it would never go negative, but the increase would be delayed or deferred, which is where the name comes from. So, we have two areas in particular that we focused on in this 2015 change. The first one is the Village Center, and I think all of us believe that the Village Center is a priority for us to enhance and, and grow within the scope of what we feel is appropriate. And so, we focused on offering this incentive to retail businesses. Again, they have to be doing enough construction that they raise the value, the taxable value of the property. So, someone moving into a vacant space isn't going to qualify for an incentive. Restaurants, again, costs a lot of money to build a restaurant, so that was another area. And then, mixed use, where at least one use is retail or restaurant. So, those were really the only three things in the Village Center that we were offering any type of incentive on. In other locations, we offered a, again, a discount on real estate taxes for manufacturing, distribution, and these specific office uses mentioned in our ordinance. IT, digital media, healthcare, biotechnology, clean energy, business office. And there was no comma in that, so I literally repeated it the same. A clean energy business office, which I'm not sure we have a definition for that anywhere. So, again, to determine who's eligible and who's not, on that particular one, might be tough, and assisted living, or any designated brownfield location. So, so that was the limit of our incentive. So, one of the things that we talked about at the Economic Development Commission were what additional things should we be considering that we might want to incentivize? In the Village Center, we specifically talked about a hotel or hospitality business, which would certainly add to our downtown and make our community much more attractive, and help people stay here a little bit longer, because right now, they, there's only a limited number of rooms for them to stay if they came for, for example, Village Fair Days. They, it, you know, there's only so many rooms, and basically, people are forced to go to other communities to stay overnight. Not only assisted living, but also residential nursing care. This, as our population ages, is going to continue to grow as a need, and we do have the hospital as an anchor in our downtown, and so considering related uses, certainly residential nursing care could potentially be an asset to this community. Recreational, our entertainment facilities, again, if you think about our community as a tourist destination, which is what we want to be, recreation and entertainment for families, for older seniors, is going to be advantageous for us. And again, we're talking about where they are constructing taxable property and increasing the grant list. So, if you're, if you go into an existing space, unless you're adding another floor or adding to the building, it's not going to qualify. Transportation facilities, specifically, I picked this up in a community that does have an active train location. So, when it comes to transportation facilities, we may want to have that as an eligible use as well. All office uses, not separating a few from the many uses that there are. Healthcare and medical uses, again, just kind of clearing up what's the difference between a healthcare office and a medical use office, you know, which is which. And permanent residential use for market rate, not 1030G projects. So, one of the recommendations, if, when, once you read that whole Camoin report, that in the section on housing, one of the opportunities we have is that right now, people want to live in downtown areas. We have very strong limitations on residential units in downtown. When it is, it is a challenge sometimes to get those approved. However, if, if we want to see more applications for converting some obsolete office space, which has low demand, to some residential market rate space, which has high demand, that would also be advantageous to the community. But again, if they're not building, they're probably not going to qualify. And we're going to get into some examples, what the, what we currently offer and what is recommended. And then, when we get into business and industrial zones, basically, if they're going into an area that is zoned for them, so, so these uses would not be incentivized to go into a residential area, they would only be incentivized to go into a commercial or industrial zone. Again, looking at hotel or hospitality, recreation and entertainment, transportation, assisted living, residential nursing care, manufacturing, assembly, storage, distribution, offices, medical health technology, headquarters and regional operations centers. Again, we have some larger parcels of land that would be very suitable to these uses, but they were never considered for an incentive in our current program. So, this is an expansion that's being recommended. Not only designated brownfields, which I definitely agree should stay on the list, but we also have a new blight ordinance, and those properties that are designated blighted, and, and I've talked to a number of people about this, if those properties are designated blighted under our blight ordinance, and they're a commercial property, it would be absolutely be in our best interest to offer some kind of incentive to get that property not only cleaned up, but put back into productive use. And then, also designated revitalization or development zone areas. We currently don't have any zones, but should we in the future? So, for example, we have talked many times about the bar grant area. If we were to incentivize development in that specific geographic area, again, that reaps a lot of rewards for the community. Short-term leveling of taxes for, once those years have passed, full 100% revenue. And then airspace, which again, not that I see the need for that in the near future, but I would hate to have to come back here with a project waiting to do something regarding airspace. And again, I see this a lot in more urban environments, where somebody's going to build over a rail line or over a highway, and Danbury actually includes this in their ordinance. So, that airspace piece, it's not going to hurt us to have it in there. If we never use it, that's fine. All right, so how does this actually work? So, we did a couple of examples, and I also want to mention Brian Lastra, the tax assessor, came to two Economic Development Commission meetings, as well as supplied these key studies for us to work with. So, example one is a downtown existing space, and many of you might recognize that it's across Church Street from Town Hall. Current use, retail and apartments, proposed use, restaurant and office. So, it's basically still mixed use. It currently meets our ordinance. The current assessed is 253, 260, and again, it's really important to know where your starting line is. Current real estate taxes on an annual basis are $7,269. If they invest $150,000 into converting that space to restaurant and office, the total tech assessment increase will be an estimated, and again, this is from Brian, $96,740. The post-investment assessed amount is roughly $350,000. The post-investment tax at 100% would be $10,045. So, basically, the improvement would bring the annual taxes from 7269 to 1045. So, under our current method, on the left, we would offer, as an incentive, two years at 50% of the new taxes deferred. So, if. So in pre-investment, there's your 7269. Year one and two, 50% of the increase would be half of the 1045. So it would rise to 8657 for those two years. And then in year three, it would go to the full amount, which would be 1045. The total tax incentive to the town would be $2,776. Under the proposed method, what the Economic Development Commission and I have been working on is that we would offer five years at 100% of the new taxes deferred. And I'll get to the other communities in a minute. But pre-investment, it would be 7269. Year one through five, it would stay 7269. So the amount the town receives would not go down. And then in year six, it would go to the full amount, 1045. The total incentive would be $13,880. Again, what we're looking to do is incentivize people to invest in the downtown area and improve the buildings in a major way. Not, not a small way. And these buildings will not maintain themselves over time. There is something called demolition by neglect. And that's when a property owner does not take care of their building for a long time. And we have some of those, not necessarily in downtown, but other parts of town. We don't want to get to that point in downtown because then we really have bigger problems. But anyway, this would, the intent here is to, oh yeah.
Katie?
I just have a quick question. So I come in and you give me this break, so I'm paying the lower amount. And I sell the business in the second year. Does the tax break remain with the property?
The way that it's written, no, no. I did supply you with a copy of the ordinance. And the, you've got two versions. You've got a redline version and a clean copy. If they sell, so basically, before they get the incentive, they have to do a presentation to the town council. The town council would have to approve it. They, we would enter into a written development agreement whereby if they did not follow the conditions, which include owning a building, the, the whole thing becomes void.
But we can't prevent somebody from selling their business.
No.
So that's why, there's a simple question is, if they sell the business to me, I'm going to be the buyer in the third year. Am I going to pay 7,200 in tax? Or am I going to pay 10,000? Or am I going to pay what it's rated at, at the year that I buy it?
You would, in order to carry it through, you would have to come in and enter into a new agreement with the town council.
Gotcha.
So because the, the town council agreement is with the original.
Got it. Okay. I just.
Chris? Some of the value is going to be in the tax deferment, too. So if somebody sells in year two, part of the value that they're getting is, they would assume would be another three to four years of tax incentive. So.
But they would have to come get approval.
It's at our discretion.
Yes.
Chris?
So is the, the new assessment in year six determined at the pre, at the year one? Or when year six come around, comes around, do we then do an assessment, an evaluation?
He, the, we can only assess, we can only estimate the changes ahead of time. It will still be assessed on the regular schedule of assessments.
So we're not.
So, and the only difference will be that the increase, so will not, he will not pay that portion unless he violates the terms of the agreement or the agreement ends. When the agreement ends, he'll have a real assessment that he will pay 100% of the taxes.
And whatever that is.
Whatever that is. Oh, and even though I show the taxes all the same, if the tax rate changes, which it does, the taxes would change based on what the tax rate was.
So the deferral, in other words, the deal here is basically what you get at the beginning. And if the rate goes up or the valuation goes up from whatever, or down, that is what determines all these other years of tax. And if it's sold, the person who buys it, of course, they're getting, they're going to pay whatever they pay and the benefit of whatever remodeling was done. But I'm going to either sign into a new contract or I'm going to be paying tax, just like everybody else on the street.
That's correct.
Okay.
And by the way, the recommendation was, some, some communities.
Karen, Tom.
Just to clarify, this is just, so everybody knows, this is just based on the new investment.
Correct.
The building is worth that number. We're, we're looking, the scenario says, based on $150,000 investment, we're going to give you a five-year, 100% tax abatement based on the improvement.
Right.
But as Katie said, you know, you had said this as well. Taxes go up, it's based on the original valuation. So if it goes up, they're going to pay incrementally more based on the value.
And the presentation to the council originally includes things like job creation and the salaries for those jobs and the job descriptions and, and any other relevant information. And there's kind of a lot of relevant information. Brian and I have already revised the application form for the existing tax deferral ordinance. And changing it to reflect the new proposal will not be difficult. But it's, the old one, you might recall, was one page. Our new one is about five pages, asking for very specific information, including information about the company or the business that's buying or investing the building, that we will want to be assured that we are entering into an agreement with a company that we want to be here.
You know, Karen, that's a lot of staff time. Is it really, are we going to end, are we going to end up spending more money for you and Brian and everything? I just, you know, the bottom line is, because this has happened before, you can sign on the dotted line as many times as you put out there. But if somebody's going to, A, go out of business or decide to move away, we can't stop them.
No.
And so I guess, I'm, I think this is a great idea to consider. It's nice, I'm glad we're looking at some new things, it's wonderful. But I think that a five-page application or whatever, contract, might be overkill. But then, you know, I haven't seen it, so. I'm just saying is that it's happened to us before, so.
Is some of this extension on the application going to be based on the credibility of the, of the person coming in? Because that was a discussion years ago we had regarding this, was, you know, we had people that come in, they sold themselves fabulously. But if we had done a deeper dive on them, we would have noticed that, you know, 10 years ago, they did this to another community, and five years before that, they did it to another community. So obviously, based on the person's credibility and their history of doing these things, which is going to be at our, at our discretion, is going to be an important part of the evaluation process.
And it covers some specific things that Brian needs for data and that I would want for tracking. Because again, we're, say we enter into some of these, which would be my hope, I want to track our results and visit with these people on a yearly basis at least.
Does each application come before us for approval?
Yes.
Okay.
Every single one. So, and that's the way it's currently written. And I don't plan on changing that, I think that's fine. In my previous position, we adopted a similar program. And actually, this is a common program across the United States. Many states, many cities have this. I average two a year, which is not bad, really. Because it represented in more investment than I think we would have gotten otherwise. And we did plenty of projects that didn't require incentives. But having this available, especially I think for some of the bigger projects, it's a short-term incentive. And, you know, as we heard, we have some opportunities that we want to take advantage of. And a lot of those are, in my view, being held up because investment, basically, if you, if you build a million-dollar building, by the time you're finished, it's worth $700,000. And it's, you can't finance that. You, you end up paying a lot of cash out of your pocket to build something. And so this is a short-term way to offset some of that upfront investment. It's not going to offset all of it, but it, it's going to do some of it so that people have a more confident level of saying, I'm going to recoup my money in New Milford.
Real quick, are we limited to the term that we can offer?
Seven years is what the state allows us. We went with five across the board. So the recommendation, and you'll see it in the text of the ordinance, was to go to 100% for five years for every construction project for commercial, manufacturing, that list of uses that increase the, the value of the property by $50,000 or more. So again, small projects where you're just moving into existing space are probably not going to qualify. And $50,000 to get that much value? You have to do a lot to a property to get a $50,000 bump in value. Maybe an addition.
Assessment.
Assessment. Right, which again, you, you have to multiply. And Brian has been very tremendous. He's got experience with the similar program in his past positions as well. So he's familiar with this.
I, I would just like to see at least, have the ability to stretch it to seven years, which would be at our discretion as well.
Yes.
But on some of the really larger projects, another two years may make a difference.
It very well may.
A hotel, entertainment complex, mixed into the shopping center, it may take a little bit longer to incentivize.
You can always modify the terms at the town council level. At least the way that it's written. And I believe that the ordinance has language that says, this is 100% at the discretion of the town council. So if they're not, if, say they're going to put a million dollars into a new building, but they're only going to create four jobs and you feel that five years at 100% is too much, that can be negotiated down. So it is 100% within your discretion. However, one of the things that I like about the five-years, 100% blanket is it's very good for marketing. So when we put on our incentive website, you know, 100% tax abatement, and then, you know, the asterisk, on new assessment, five years, that is a very powerful and eye-catching statement to make. Very competitive, yes, to the other communities that right now, many of them are exceeding our levels of, of new investment.
I can tell you this, to my fellow town council members, I sit on this commission and we went around about this. We went with three years, two years, 50%. And having gone through it and to ad nauseam, it, five years sounded like a good start, anyway. You know, five years, 100%, we want the businesses to come in. We're all pro, let's grow the community. And Karen's going to show you a slide of the, not only of example two, but what the other towns in the area are doing. And the way it's written right now, it's, we're not even competitive.
Well, I noticed some of those are cities. Newtown is probably the closest to us, and they do it with the council decision.
Yeah.
So I think we just have to know our size.
Absolutely.
So we did a second example, and that involved a new building on raw land. And so in this case, this is, this is not the right picture, but it is 275 Danbury Road, which is the tree health company that went in on Still River Drive. So it's a, it's a brand-new building on Still River Drive.
Near the road, it's the one.
Yeah. Proposed use warehouse distribution. It's actually, again, a service business. Currently assessed, just the land, $140,000. Real estate tax on the land only, $4,018. The new investment for the building, about $1 million. Total assessment increase, $700,000. Post-investment assessed, $840,000. Post-investment tax at 100%, $24,108. So the taxes on the, on this property are going from $4,018 up to $24,108. So this is what it would look like under our current method, which does allow a three-years at a 50% of new tax deferred, totaling a, an incentive of $28,920. The proposed method, again, it's the same. Five years, 100% of the increase deferred. Pre-investment, $4,018, stays the same for five years. Year six goes to the full amount, $24,108. The total tax incentive, $1,004,500. Again, over five years.
Karen, this brings up, so this is a vacant land. They're going to put up a Butler Building or whatever. So let's say I'm the person, I own the land. I'm going to put the money in to put the building up. And then I'm going to look for tenants. So I'm going to get this tax, I don't have any tenants.
Right.
You're going to offer me a deferral on the idea that I'm going to put it up for rent?
That, that would be, it's up to you, but.
But we have a lot of those buildings and there aren't any people renting them. I'm just curious, so I would reap the reward of lower, you know, $4,000 tax instead of $14,000, but yet I haven't brought anything to the town. There's nobody in it.
Well, we actually don't have a lot. I mean, in the report earlier, what did she say?
I heard the report, but I drive on the same road you do, and I do see a lot of empty business.
I was looking for an existing building, there's not much.
Well, this man's going to build one.
It's already done, it's already up.
But I'm just curious, so that is just an example of what could happen. We do have the vacant space, so I do put up a lovely building. It can be built to suit inside, as they say. And I would be able to have this, as long as I comply with whatever other rules and regs you have, before I have anybody who's in there bringing any jobs at all.
That application would, again, come to the town council. And if the council felt that it was not sufficiently supporting economic development, whether it was because of job creation or the lack of job creation, that would absolutely be up to this body to say, we feel that, that an incentive of this type is not appropriate.
Is there a part of an incentive that has to do with the number of jobs created?
And that is not a criteria of this particular one. There is one community I know of that includes job creation.
Well, there, I mean, I know there are incentives that, about that.
But I did not include it in this one because it varies so greatly.
Right, and nothing in the paperwork says anything about your hiring capacity?
Well, it does specifically say that, that the business or the applicant needs to make a case for why they should get the incentive.
Got you.
So whatever is going to help that case, and I would expect job creation to be an important factor. It would be important to me. So I would want to highlight whatever jobs were going to be created.
Got you, thanks.
But again, if somebody, it, right now, we do have a lot, I shouldn't say a lot. We have a sufficient amount of retail and office space available. We don't have a lot of industrial space available. So if we were to get a spec building that had the right-sized spaces, I, as soon as something starts under construction, I get phone calls. What's being built? Are they looking for tenants? Can I move in? Can I have the name of the contractor? So people are looking for industrial space.
You say, you know, if someone comes and says, we want retail, we can say to them, listen, retail is just.
Well, it's not on the eligibility list.
Oh, two.
It's not eligible at this point. Again, I think that there's been, in my view, there's been sufficient construction and there's a, they're, they're getting the rents that they need to offset the construction cost. That's not always the case. And especially in industrial, most companies that are going to construct something are building it for their own use. And that's where we start running into financial difficulties, basically. And this is what we're looking at to try to help overcome that obstacle. So, so that's the second example. Here are the other communities. And there are other ones out there offering, you know, I didn't include Hartford, West Hartford. They're, they're all offering things. You can read about their projects in the paper.
What is Brookfield offering?
I did not find anything on Brookfield. I called them twice and did not get a call back. Southbury is working on legislation right now for their town council to approve something.
Did you look at Oxford?
Oxford I do have in my office.
Because they had that at one time.
They still do. They still do. The one, which one? One of these. So the Newtown one, as you pointed out, is negotiable at the discretion of the town council. They don't have a formula that they advertise with.
They're written on the floor.
All right, Broughton has the job creation specifically in their application program. Windsor and Torrington have different tiers, depending on how much money you invest. Again, I think that complicates the picture. I, I really think that in our situation, we are best served by keeping it clean and simple and promoting a, a blanket incentive that is not only easy for them to figure out, but is consistent to all.
So is five years really competitive? So is five years really competitive or most of them are seven years?
Danbury, most of these have something up to seven years, but they're not at a hundred percent. So for example, Danbury can offer up to a hundred percent for seven years, but they've only done it once. So again, I think they would be, the way, they, they actually don't promote this. I got this directly from their economic development director. And that's actually the case in most of these places, which surprises me. But, you know, if you have an incentive, you should tell people about it. So that's, or else.
I mean, listen, two hundred, two hundred and five towns here are right on the eighty-four corridor. So they have a greater advantage than we have here.
Right. But we're overcoming a couple of things. So this, again, I, I think that the five years, again, the Economic Development Commission talked about this at length for three meetings. And went back and forth on sliding scale, how many years, how much investment. And really, I think we all came to the conclusion that, that being consistent was the best way to go.
So Karen, in this one big building scenario, which obviously builds a suit. So manufacturing, whatever, they come in, they put up some walls, they bring in whatever. So now you've, you've added to the value by the fact that they've made improvements inside.
Yes.
Just like office equipment gets taxed. So how does that play in to it?
This does not include personal property or business equipment or vehicles.
But what about the upgrade to the building itself by taking one building and dividing it into, say, five manufacturing, smaller manufacturing spaces? Isn't that an improvement to the building?
I don't know that it would result in, in a huge increase in value, though, unless they filled all the spaces. That's really a question for Brian, I think.
But the value by, by having companies come in is a value, how do you relate that? I mean, the jobs, we, yes, that's good. But I'm talking about the value, this is all based upon the assessment.
Right.
So if, if the big empty building becomes a segregated five manufacturing space building by virtue of five people or three people moving in there, then it doesn't change anything in the assessment through their five years, six years, whatever?
If they, I believe, and again, I'm not the expert in how Brian does assessments.
Okay, well, that's something we can check into.
But, yeah, but the way I understand it is if they use a revenue basis for the structure, so if, if a single company built the building and they're, they're owned tenant, that's one type of valuation. If you have a, a building that has five spaces and you're renting out those spaces, they do it based on the revenue that's generated. So it's a different kind of valuation.
So that would not affect the?
It would not necessarily affect the actual overall value of the real estate.
But it may be value-based on the revenue, but it's not really a major improvement on the building. Putting up petition walls is not a major improvement, an improvement to their real estate.
Now, if you double the size of the building and then divided it up, then you're talking about something more valuable.
Before us and talks about putting up a million-dollar Butler Building, empty inside, you know, a hangar. And since you just, we just found out that, of course, we need more manufacturing space, we wouldn't want to turn that away. On the other hand, that's a big chunk of money in taxes that we're not going to get.
Right. But on the other side is, you may not, you may have to give somebody that type of incentive to fill the space.
Sure, I get it. Yeah, we have to weigh it out.
Right.
Or to build a building.
To build a building and roll the dice that in the next five years he can, she can fill the space up.
Correct.
You're still getting the increase.
Right, and that's always the.
He still has to pay the.
And a builder, a building like that.
The value is still going up.
Somebody's going to be paying.
And eventually, we get that money after five years.
Whether the building is empty or not. The additional revenues come from whoever moves in there, depending on the equipment. If it's just retail shelves, it's one thing. If you're bringing in a supercomputer, it's a, it's a separate.
Well, that's why the ordinance is, what is it, about a hundred and fifty pages, the ordinance?
Oh, it's not bad. It got long on the redline version because all the old language is still there and I just lined things out and rewrote portions based on what we were seeing in these other communities. To, especially on the youth side and on the, the percentage side is actually easy to change. It was the list of uses and some of the other conditions that we wanted to ensure that we were doing good projects.
Good job.
Well, I like it.
Thank you.
I do too.
Is this something that we're going to table to the next one?
Oh, yeah.
And we're not taking a? Well, I'm on the commission, so I'm all for it.
Okay.
No, no, but there's an ordinance here and there's a lot of language that I think we should all.
I think what we need is just get a consensus from the councils as something to pursue.
It's a great direction.
Absolutely.
It's great.
So keep working on that.
All right, we definitely will keep working on that.
Bring it to us soon.
Oh, yeah. Well, I want, I would like to get this through whatever process is going to be required prior to the new construction season. Because again, last year, we had a great construction year. I anticipate getting a lot of phone calls. I'm already getting a lot of phone calls. And being able to talk about this is going to be huge. And there are a couple of companies that are waiting for me to call them tomorrow. So hearing the favorable feedback is going to be exciting for them and certainly, I think, exciting for us. All right. So that's the end of that one.
There is more?
Oh, yes. I have been so busy. Now, next is in the economic development packet, the second item is to discuss the sewer hookup fee incentive. So this is an additional incentive that has come up based on feedback and situations from businesses. And again, discussion with the Economic Development Corporation. I just want to get through all this part of it. This is twelve B. All right, so the Corporation for Economic Development has long wanted to find a way to offer assistance to businesses in the community. And one of the things that came up, and this started actually previous to me arriving, however, I was able to help kind of get things moving forward. And so now we are, this is a proposal for a new type of incentive utilizing the powers and authority of the corporation, which are slightly different than the commission. So what, many of you may recall the sewer MOU that got signed in August last year. That included at the end a couple of lines that indicated that the corporation would come up with a, an incentive for hookup fees and that would present to the council. So this is your presentation on that topic. So, and I know Ole would have loved to have been here. He is actually out of the country at the moment, but he will be back later this week. So anyway, as the designated development agency, there is an opportunity for the corporation to participate in an incentive for hookup fees. So many discussions have been had, both at the town level and at the sewer commission level regarding hookup fees. They and many businesses have told me, and I guess many other people, because I've only been here a short time, that the sewer hookup fees are a significant obstacle to especially new construction or expansion of existing businesses. In those two situations, you know, it has become a critical issue. And we, as a community, have sewer capacity. That is not a problem for us. But we need more companies to hook up to the sewer and utilize that sewer capacity because right now, it's being wasted. And so how do we get more people to hook up and pay that monthly or quarterly fee? Well, we've got to get them convinced to hook up and that it's in their best interest. Now, to hook up to sewer, not only do we charge a fee, you have to use a, a specific list of contractors who are authorized to do construction and hook to the sewer. You have to pay that company whatever, whatever they're going to cost. So it's not as though they're not going to be paying any fees at all. But the sewer hookup fee, and again, I, I wish I could tell you exactly how it's calculated, but it involves frontage, it involves how many bathrooms, it involves many things. The sewer commission calculates it. And they give the person who's building the building or expanding the calculation and the bill for what it's going to cost. And they can't build that building and hook up to sewer until they pay that amount. As a matter of fact, sewer commission won't sign off on their building permit until they've paid. That can range from a couple thousand dollars to, I think last year, we had a record of sixty thousand dollars for one building. What we're looking to do is, again, remove an obstacle to people deciding to hook up to the sewer system. Because in the end, we need those users on the system. So the way, and I made a, let's see, maybe I'll just do this. So one, the way that we're proposing this would work is that, just as before, the business would get their approval through the land use boards and commissions. They would then go to the sewer commission, the calculation for their fee would be done and they would get the bill. They would take that bill, fill out an application that would then go to the Corporation for Economic Development. The corporation would then issue a requisition. I want to go down one more page, I think.
Your flowchart's at the end of that. Throw it up.
You know, I'm there. All right. Right. So here's the language of the, of the, I'll quote that in a minute. So the way I think we envisioned it working is that, and I, forgive me, it's a little small on there. But that the voucher, a voucher would be then created and go to finance. Finance would have a dedicated line. A check would be issued to the sewer commission. The sewer commission would collect that money with the bill. They would sign off on the building permit. The sewer commission would then take the check, return it to the town, would go to finance, finance would deposit it back in the line. So it would go out, it would come back in. Go out, it would come back in. So that, again, the town at the end of the year makes up the shortfall in the bonding payment. This would not change that situation, but it would be getting people hooked up on the sewer.
So basically, the amount that the sewer commission owes the town in that bond would get reduced by the amount that we're incentivizing this person?
No.
Yeah.
So basically, what happened is right now, the town subsidizes the sewer to a tune of about one point seven million dollars. So the thought process is, is the sewer plant is at thirty percent capacity. Is it getting more people hooked up for a whole host of reasons? One, nitrogen content. The plant would run way more efficiently with more usage. So right now, one point seven million dollars goes to make the bond payment and that's it, subsidized by the town in New Milford. So the thought process is to put that to work. So if you had X, Y, Z company come in and say their bill is, their connection fee's twenty grand, I'm just making it up. So the body that decides, which ultimately is our council, with a recommendation of the corporation says, we're going to give them a fifty percent abatement. Right? So it's ten thousand dollar abatement. So what happens is, the, the owner or investor pays the sewer plant ten thousand dollars. The town in New Milford pays the other ten to the sewer commission. The sewer commission, within thirty days, then pays back the town the ten grand. So basically, it's almost a wash. And what you're using is the one point seven million dollars that we're subsidizing to now try and bring people onto the plant.
And just to be clear, this connection fee, I mean, all it is, it just gives them permission to hook up. That's, that's it. Right? There's no service rendered for that, or they're still going to pay a usage fee?
Correct.
You still have to pay somebody to put the pipe in.
Exactly. So we've got to really utilize asset, right, a sewer plant. To me, it's crazy, we throw up these roadblocks.
And then you need building, then you need the building department to inspect it.
So in this case, here's the schedule that was developed through several discussions about at what, what if level of investment should be incentivized. So small projects that the capital expenditure was fifty thousand dollars or the job creation was one to ten full-time or part-time people, so it could be either or, would be eligible for a fifty percent discount on the connection fee. So again, if it's twenty thousand dollars, the business pays ten and, and basically, we handle the other ten for the project. If it's ten to twenty-five jobs or a hundred thousand dollars, it goes up to eighty percent. And then if it's more, if it's twenty-five to a hundred jobs or over a half a billion dollar of investment, so there you're talking a pretty good size addition or new construction at a hundred percent of the fee, of just that one thing.
So I love thinking of new things, but you know that what occurred here once before with the promise for X number of jobs and sewer line was put in at great expense and the jobs didn't come to be.
But that's in here. But there's a clawback at the bottom of this.
Well, right, but the clawback from someone who has nothing is nothing.
But you have a building that someone else might want to use it to connect it to the sewer, so it's not like.
Well, that's not saying they're leaving the building. That's just, I'm talking about not meeting the, the number of jobs that are promised. Yes. And I, I think that it's, I'm just, rather than getting all that, but we can't recoup money if someone doesn't have any money, if they don't have any work and they let go of their people, ba-da-ba-da-ba. But I'm curious to know what towns you compared. You did a great job on the other one. What towns you went to, you don't need to tell us all tonight, but I would like to know what other data you used to come up with the, the amounts. Because a full-time job versus a part-time job, those are not equivalent in a lot of ways. The month, the spending power of the part-time person versus the full-time person, where they're going to be able to live, et cetera. So I'm just, I'd just like to see some backup on this. I think it's a great way to start this conversation.
I did some research. I did not find a lot of other communities offering incentives for their sewer hookup fees.
But were the fees that's ours?
Well, and that's an issue of debate with the sewer commission. And I really, you know, I think that businesses have one view of those hookup fees and, and the commission might have other things to say about that. But.
But what other towns, what are, are their fees?
They're not doing incentives.
They're not doing incentives for hookup fees. However, I have not heard of any that were as high as what ours have been. But again, that's more anecdotal. It, it's not something that, and I've seen on any other town websites. I've asked several economic developers if they have anything like this. They haven't. Unfortunately, some towns our size don't even have capacity in their sewer. So why would they incentivize hooking people up to it?
That's where I was going to get to, Karen, and the other surrounding towns, for instance, Danbury's going in a major expansion because they don't have any capacity.
Right.
And Brookfield doesn't have a plant, so they're trying to tie into Danbury. So some of these other ones, we can turn this, realistically, it's been for years, as, as excess capacity right now, which is a negative, we could turn this into a positive by, you know, creating more economic development with this capacity.
So here's a question, because this is the kind of stuff that I and I think other people hear, hear frequently, is this is all good to bring the business and help us in many ways. But I'm a resident and it's a very high fee for me to hook up. And I may be told I have to hook up. So how will this affect the homeowner?
There are, there are several benefits to homeowners for getting new, new businesses to move in and, and hook up to the sewer, as well as existing businesses to expand. One is, over time, those user fees to the sewer users are going to stay stable. Because we can't continue to operate our system cost-effectively with thirty percent.
But you only pay one time to hook up. The usage fees are what they are. So I'm going to see that somebody's going to come along and put in ten, fifteen jobs and they're going to get an eighty percent discount. And meanwhile, it costs me several thousands of dollars to have somebody come in. I mean, I don't really know how much it is anymore. Oh, I, I don't know. I've heard some stories that surprised me at how much it was. I just wonder if in this, you could give some consideration to, instead of thinking down the road, because when it hap- the road, because when it happens, it's, it's a big expense. I mean, no matter whether you've got a business or a house, I just, you've considered that at all in this discussion?
Not specifically, I have talked with Kathleen at the sewer commission about things like payment plans and other alternatives.
Yes, that's good.
And we do offer those. So currently, we have a number of business entities that are making payment plans on a 10-year plan to pay these fees, again, because they're considered to be extraordinary.
I'm glad to hear that, I didn't know.
And again, we do require businesses to hook up too, absolutely, so.
Oh, yes, I know, that's, but I didn't know it was a payment plan, perhaps that should be advertised more widely.
And in specific, I've talked to them about putting more information about the sewer commission on our website.
Absolutely.
It's very minimal, and I think it would be beneficial to all of us to have more information on the website about, you know, how to calculate the hookup fee, what.
And about a payment plan.
Yeah, what you can do if you want to hook up to the sewer, and you know, who do you talk to, how do you go about it, how long does it take? Especially as we do road construction, that's the perfect time, while the road is open, to hook up to the sewer. And getting more people hooked up should be all of our goals at this point, for the long-term health of the system.
Is it the consensus of the committee to continue to fine tune this?
I'll look for more communities, and in addition, I'd like to send this draft information to the town attorney for him to begin putting it into appropriate ordinance, language, and format, because obviously, this was written by me, not by an attorney.
Definitely, thanks.
All right. Ready for the last thing?
Don't know.
No, you have to take your turn. Let's hope so.
Tom, so if they brought sewer to your house or my house, how much would you pay? Huh?
I'd find out.
I have sewer in my house, I love it.
Good for you.
And your house is more valuable if you're hooked up to sewer, I'm just going to throw that in.
It is.
I mean, if building a septic person hooking up.
And if we could have the abbreviated version?
Yes, yes, sir. Okay, so this is the January council update for economic development, so I'm going to run through some data really quick. Targeted action, just a reminder, these are the issues that I'm focused on, on a day-in, day-out basis. Development pipeline, we currently have about 125 projects, actually, that's a few higher, since I did this last week, I've gotten three more phone calls in the last week with real live folks wanting to be in New Milford, so I feel that we're making a lot of progress, and the word is getting out that we are open for business. And I categorize them by how fast they're planning on moving, and how ready they are to, to go through the process. These are some of the pipeline projects, obviously, you can read those in your packet. The very likely list is, is really active, and the in-progress ones have already either started construction, or we're just kind of following up with them while they go through the approval process. This is an important slide, so this is looking at building permit, permit activity between 2018 and 2019. Permit activity in 2019 was 304% higher than in 2018, and that's for the calendar year. We had over 30, almost $35 million in, in commercial and industrial building, oh, no, wait, that's all of them, sorry, I did have a separate slide that I took out that separated them. But this is for all housing and commercial and industrial. 50% of last year's building permit activity was commercial and industrial, so that is a huge increase over 2018, and I think we can probably even beat that this year, although you will see that really big spike in October is Canterbury School. But all those other ones are lots of medium and, and smaller projects. So we had an excellent, excellent year, and January this year is starting off just as hot. So I think the weather's helping us a little bit, people have gone right into 2020 mode, and are very excited about their projects for the coming year. These are some of the projects that are completed in 2019. Employment, here, I did want to point out, I have New Milford, that is New Milford Town, and then Danbury Region, we are part of the Danbury Region for workforce, so these numbers are all from the state, and they are through November of 2018, and November 2019, the December numbers were not ready when I prepared this slide. So we actually have a higher labor force, just by a few, than we did at this point last year, and, but our unemployment is slightly higher. So I'm not exactly sure, again, it's, it takes a lot to take these numbers and find meaningful information here, but I am suspecting that some of those were seasonal employees who got laid off at the end of the summer, because we do have so many, we, we always show a peak in the summertime for employment, so I think there's a lot of camps and things like that, where people work in the summer and they get laid off in the fall. And even construction, a lot of people get laid off in the, when the, when the weather turns. So Danbury is slightly below us, but they were last year too, as far as unemployment percents. The state is significantly higher, so we are doing better than the state overall, and then, again, with the US, we're doing much better than the US overall. So where our trends and where we are positioned is fairly healthy, but we do want to watch these numbers carefully. Streamline process, I do want to add one thing, and that is that, starting tomorrow at our DST meeting, we will be, once a month, taking a project from 2019, and analyzing it, putting it on a timeline, and looking for ways we could have made the process faster, smoother, better. It's part of the continuous improvement process, and so we're going to be looking at that as a DST group, and each of us talking about what happened in their department with this project, and we're starting with one that I was just talking to Tom, or I mean, Bill, about earlier, and that is the smoothie place on Bank Street, and they are still under construction, they had trouble getting a carpentry firm, so they finally did get one, and they will be open for spring this year. So, you know, again, I have a measurement of, of all the activity that's occurring, and I'll continue to do that, it only starts, yes.
Karen, I have a question. So your typical process?
Yes.
When you say ZBA occasional?
That's how often it's needed.
That's your involvement is needed, or?
No.
A typical person in the one month?
That's generally how long it takes, is, it takes, you submit your information, you're at, they only have one meeting a month. You're up at the next meeting, and they usually decide at that point in time, some get carried over, it's usually a month.
So the zoning is gone 157 days, that sounds.
That's for that project, and that actually threw off several of the calculations. Danbury Road, that's the mixed-use project, and that required all of the extensions that were available to them legally. So that's why that took so long.
And the average building permit, commercial, is taking almost 27 days?
Yes, and again, it's skewed by.
How did that stand up, what, did you use a year time period, or what?
I, what I did was, I looked at all of the 2019 commercial and industrial permits.
2019, so.
2019, so this is recent activity.
Okay.
I didn't see the point in going back really far.
Well, only because I'm curious to know, was it more or less in years before, and what's making it, that seems very long to me, if I'm waiting for a permit to do something on my house, I wouldn't want it.
A lot of them were within a week, so, so.
But you said that's an average.
That is an average, because there were a number of projects that took more than a month, and I argued.
Would the median be very different?
Would what?
Would the median be very different?
Oh, it would probably be significantly lower, I would think, because there were several.
Yeah.
Only commercial and industrial. I didn't, again, getting into the residential stuff, most of that doesn't go to the zoning board, or a lot of this other process, to be frankly honest, most of this process is designed for commercial and industrial projects. So, you know, again, it's important that we, from internally, that we're looking at this, and we're looking for ways to be more efficient, and recognize where we have dropped the ball, or, again, who, at what point should reach out? Because after DST, we, I usually summarize, this is what you should do next, and then this, and then this. If they don't do that, you know, whose job is it to reach out to them? Usually, it's me. But if I, if I think that they've met with Laura, then I'm going to talk to Laura and say, have you seen them? And then, but it might be a week or two weeks before I do that. So how can we shorten that time, so that I know, okay, five days went by, and nobody talked to them, and we don't know if they know how to fill out the form?
And, and real quick to answer your question, Chris, if you pull out the 189 Danbury Road, which was 155 days, right, that's what it took? If you pulled that one out, and you pulled out, I think there was one more, but the average commercial and multifamily applications was about 28.77 days.
For zoning?
For zoning.
That sounds more like it.
So that, as Karen said, that really kind of skewed everything?
It skewed everything significantly.
That was the affordable housing, you had to put that in.
And it, again, they use every extension available to them, and if there were more available, they might have not walked.
And one of the things that we're talking about, Chris, with our, when Karen did the presentation at the MAX with the other land use boards, it was a combination of everything, one of the things that we were letting the boards know was, is we're really going to be focusing on the quality of the application when it comes in, because what can happen is, is in previous meetings, we were, we were uncovering that people were putting in realistically crappy applications.
Right.
And what would happen is, because in zoning, it's a first-come, first-served, so you'd have some people that are putting in wonderful applications, and they go in, and they fly in, done. But they may get pushed off because somebody else put in prior to them a crappy application, so it's gumming the stuff up. So I've asked zoning to take a look at, if you don't have a full application, and it's not right, kick it out.
Yep.
And it may be a disruption for the first couple of times, but people will get used to, and New Milford is all about a quality application, and it will automatically speed up the process. So then zoning's not worried about having to look at, there were some people that were bringing in applications, wanted comments the night of zoning, and how can the zoning guys do that? So that's one thing that Laura and zoning's looking at, in tandem with Karen, they're all looking at, as we said, different ways to really speed up and make the process more efficient.
We did receive a lot of points in our economic development and land use planning best practices award, so here are the points that we received, communications, collaboration, again, you can read all these. Obviously, organizational capacity and policies and programs are two areas we're going to be focusing on this year to improve our score, but that will also help us be more efficient and reduce approval times, and be assured that we're doing everything we need to do to get a good project done and out the door. Again, local incentives, these are some of the things that we currently have, and I starred the ones, or I starred the sewer hookup fee, which are going to be available through the corporation, along with the revolving loan, and the grants for downtown signs and façades. We still have money in the loan program and the sign and facade program, however, we did $20,000 in grants last year, and $30,000 in loans. So we're going to need to refill the pots of money this year to keep doing that much activity, which I think we should, so.
Karen, could I just ask, you do have facade or sign grants still?
We do.
So one of the places you mentioned on here that you went to visit in one of your businesses was TriMark?
Yes.
Edwin, and he mentioned to me that he's having some trouble because of where he's located on Bridge Street in getting, how he would go about getting a sign, because that's an odd situation where he is, how can you see it when you're driving by, it's almost out of your sight by the time you get there.
Right.
And I just didn't know if you were aware that he feels it's taken a long time.
He didn't mention that particular thing to me.
He told me he went, he went in to see the business, but that is, he's a perfect example, he's a, you know, a new business, new business owner, he's really making great strides, and you just really should have a sign, no one knows he's back there.
I will get in touch with him tomorrow and make sure that he's got that application, it's a simple, one-page application.
Okay.
And I can go over it with him, and, and again, follow up and make sure that he gets it in to me.
That'd be nice, yeah, thanks.
We do have a couple folks that are in process now, applying for signs, they're just getting approval on the design from zoning before.
Well, that might be what his issue is, but if you wouldn't mind, just, because I can't really help him out for that.
I will do that.
Thank you.
And then marketing, again, I'm not going to read all these slides, but we do have a lot going on this year, publications, both state, regional, or national, the website, we have, we are, we have signed the contract to get that started, we are going to be, I have a meeting with them at the end of the week to kick off the plans, and it will be live by the end of the fiscal year, July 1st.
Will our new resource specialist be involved in any of this?
That has not yet been determined, so I would assume I'm going to need their help with some data on resources, so.
What do you think, Mayor? No, I'm just saying, you're selecting a new vendor, I see that, right?
Yeah.
So, and that decision was made with the people who are going to be setting it up, and the people are going to be using it, and you're talking to people about how it's going to look, and you have input.
Yes, we actually are going to get a group together, because they're also going to do a small branding, a, a small amount of branding work with us, so to determine what the website will look like ultimately.
But they're not branding experts, though, are they?
I'm sorry.
They're not branding.
They do it, but it's not.
Lots of, lots of people say they do it. I, I'm just saying, is if we're bringing in somebody whose job it's going to be is to make it more, easier for anybody, whether you're in the town or not in the town, to find out where to get what you need, you know, maybe it'd be a good idea to get some input from that person. I don't know how long it's going to take to hire that person, but we are known for making quick moves and regretting it, so.
Yeah, well, whenever they start, they can start contributing, I'm fine with that.
Good.
Industry outreach, these are some of the things that I'm doing for business retention and expansion, as well as trade shows and outreach. And then tourism has been a pretty big issue, we've got a lot of things that we've done, and we have new things coming up. We do have plans for Restaurant Week, I'm going to be, we're hoping that will be in May, in the early part of May, or late April possibly, but we're going to be having an organizing meeting with the restaurants in February, hopefully, you know, early to mid-February. And strategic planning will be done in February, oh, I'm sorry, did you have a question?
Do the Gilmore Girls fan thing, have they committed to come back next year?
We, they have set dates, and they are going to be hosting the main event in Kent again. However, I anticipate that the tours to the communities were very successful, I know we did an amazing job.
Yes, they probably will do the tours again, it's just too bad they didn't choose us.
I wouldn't think they're going to do that again, and even if, even if there's only so many people who go on the bus trip, I think we impressed so many people last year, we're going to get a lot more car traffic than we did last year. So I thought we really knocked it out of the park last year, and impressed a lot of people with our community. And of course, the weather couldn't have been better, so, it was so perfect, the green looked amazing, and they had music, and all the stores were super busy. And then strategic planning, again, there's a lot going on with planning, and that's it.
Any questions for Karen?
Thank you.
I want you to adjourn, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Any discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Karen, nice job.